Good evening, everybody. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, good evening. Let me explain first a couple of absences this evening. Mayor Thomas is out of town on a business trip and is engaged. And Councilmember Clorici is on his way, fighting his way through the commute traffic up Highway 50 as we speak, and we hope that he will arrive shortly. Go ahead and ask the clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Thomas will be noted as absent in the minutes. Councilmem-- excuse me, Vice Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item three, announcements and presentations to the public, brief comments by the council. Councilmember Wilkins, do you have any comments this evening for the public?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Borelli, any announcements or comments for the--
I can't-- oh, I-- well, you and I attended the People-to-People--
Yes, we did.
--meeting the other day and told the youth delegates who our People-to-People program is sending to Japan, they wanted some of the city council, a couple of, to give a brief history about their city so that they can represent us well. So, America and I did that, and I attended the new farmer's market over along the creek, and it was beautiful. And I also attended the one on Sunday morning over at the Posit-- we've got all these farmer's markets, and they're great. I'm just getting healthier and healthier.
Thank you. I too was going to mention that it looks like the new farmer's market location is off to a smashing, successful start. I know there's a couple little things that we'll be working on to make sure that there is clear and continuous access for the trail and the trail users. So, I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. Took a coordinated effort with the Coalwells, who have been the longtime operator of that, and all of their sellers and their dealers, and they have their own board of directors and what have you. So, it's been a process, and so thank you to staff and to them for getting that accomplished. And from what I could see in social media, people absolutely love the fact that they can walk down along the creek. They do need to bring their sun hat, but it's summertime. So, thank you for that. And congratulations to our city engineering staff. They issued construction update number 11 today in their efforts to keep the public informed on the Western Placerville Interchange Project, which is the off-ramp and the park-and-ride, and hopefully someday an on-ramp there, Ray Lawyer. And they have made a couple significant benchmarks on the project, and that is the utility relocation work. That is not an easy thing to pull off. You've got three other utility companies that don't maybe see your project as the highest priority in their lives. They've gotten all that work done, and so that is a real positive step forward that will now enable the Veer Camp Engineering to continue to move the soil, to continue to grade the site. And I understand that the retaining walls are being poured, and we look forward to EID getting a new water line in there. So, thank you to staff for doing that, and thank you for the really thorough updates, and those are available on the city's website, and I'm sure Rebecca has some of those in the back also. We'll move on then to closed session. Mr. Driscoll, do you have anything to report?
I do not. The council did not take reportable action in closed session tonight.
Thank you, sir. Move on to adoption of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor? Aye. Adoption of the agenda as it sets. Item number six, 6.1, ceremonial matters. I saw this, and I'd hoped that there would be guests in the building, and there are. This is a proclamation declaring August 7, 2018, as National Night Out. Now, for those that have been following National Night Out, and our National Night Knight, who was with us this evening, the city of Placerville-- Now, that knight will be wearing that suit on August the 7th, no matter what the temperature is outside. He is a very brave knight. In all seriousness, we have done extraordinarily well for a community our size. We have almost, for the last, how many years, Kim? Number one nationally?
Well, nationally, California, we've been number one for about seven years.
Seven years in California, number one communities our size.
And nationally.
And we have attained that nationally. So, that is a tremendous compliment to our police department and our citizens. So, I have the honor of reading this. I will read a proclamation to the city council of the city of Placerville declaring August 7 as National Night Out, whereas National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide lights-on campaign in celebration against crime, drugs, and violence on August 7, entitled National Night Out, whereas the 35th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Placerville to join forces with 38 million people, over 16,000 communities across the United States, U.S. territories and Canada, whereas the city council plays a vital role in assisting the Placerville Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Placerville and is supporting National Night Out 2018, whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Placerville be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Placerville. And whereas the police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and camaraderie are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Mark Acuna, with the virtue of authority vested as Vice Mayor of the city of Placerville, do proclaim Tuesday, August 7, 2018, as National Night Out in the city of Placerville. Who do I get to give this to? Our National Night Out and their representative.
Our coordinator this year is Michelle Brand, and Bethany Long. Bethany is in France right now, so she was back before National Night Out. Go ahead and--
She's just gonna walk. Let's wait, wait, wait. Open it up.
Yeah. Everybody, come on over here. Get a good picture. Awesome.
Are those the shirts this year, Kim?
Yes, those are the shirts, shirts, and Michelle is wearing the shirts polo.
Oh, great. Those are nice.
Well, that's the last one. Nice, Marcus. It'll look very similar to those. That's the picture. Yes, and Michelle has a few words about National Night Out to say.
Thank you, councilmembers. Just a few words about National Night Out. So, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that provides and promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and a more caring place to live. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide on every first Tuesday in August since 1984. Neighborhoods host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events, visits from emergency personnel, exhibits, and much, much more. This year, the city of Placerville has nine neighborhood and apartment complex gatherings and five large event locations. The large event locations bring together citizens from El Dorado County and the Placerville community. The National Night Out kickoff is at Moore or Motherlode Rehabilitation Enterprises, starting at 5:00 p.m., and with all other parties starting at 6:00 p.m. The city of Placerville City Council, police, fire, and El Dorado search and rescue will all take part in visiting local community parties and help give citizens a chance to meet and engage with city and safety personnel on any questions they may have. Hot dogs, chips, and water will be provided at each location, along with fun and festive goodies and activities like bounce houses and our favorite Bubble Master Fairy Mary, who will be at Benham Park. The following streets and locations plan to have an event at National Night Out. The street locations are Allen Court and David Circle, Carson Ridge Apartments, Chamberlain Street, Cottonwood Apartments and Cottonwood Senior Apartments, Northridge Drive, Oak Crest Circle, Oak Park Hill and Greenwing Lane, Placerville Apartments, Ronald Loop, Point View, and Letitia Avenue. And the large party locations are the Moore kickoff, the city of Placerville Parks and Rec, and the El Dorado Senior Center are hosting at Benham Park, the El Dorado County Library in Placerville, the Grocery Outlet, and Sierra School. If you live near or on one of these streets, please join your neighbors and celebrate our city, neighborhood camaraderie, and your local police. If one of your streets isn't mentioned, please join us at one of your larger party locations. This is a family fun event, so please come out, enjoy a night to meet your neighbors, and have fun. And please follow the Placerville Police Department on social media to find out more about the special events at each location.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you going through that list of neighborhoods and locations for the large parties, and if they have any questions, they can go to the Placerville Police website.
Yes, they can contact us via email.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing everybody on August 7. Chief, did you have anything to add?
No, other than to just re-encourage people to go to that event, even though, you know, it's probably going to be 105 that night.
Of course.
It's August, so we shall be used to that in Northern California. It is a fun night to spend time in a relaxing atmosphere, to engage with not only members of your police department, but the way the city of Placerville does it is all members of city government. And I know that's really well received from the citizens, so look forward to it.
Thank you, Chief. We're looking forward to it. And thank you, Commander Nida, for all you do behind the scenes to keep that program going, keep that night straight. Thank you. [applause] We won't be looking for a new knight. Thank you very much. I'm sure there's always some outstanding food. That's an excellent event. All right, moving on to item seven, public comment. I'll ask first the city manager, do we have any written correspondence this evening?
Just the one item that is in your agenda tonight, a letter from Mr. Ken Shapiro, and staff is aware of that, and we are working on that particular incident, so.
All right, and just for the benefit of the audience, Mr. Shapiro's concerns are the fire danger and risks surrounding the Lumston Park area. It is an issue that he has been involved in for quite a while. So, I'll move on to item 7.2, oral communication. I would ask, this is a point where the public is welcome to speak to the city council this evening on any item that is not on the agenda. You're limited to three minutes, and I would ask that you be respectful in your comments and also address the council with subjects that are relevant to items that come before us. So, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on an item that is not on this evening's agenda?
Can I help you?
So, do you need a little help?
No.
You're a regular.
I know, I just, I'm glad the podium's a little close from today.
Okay, Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. I agree with Councilmember Borelli that the farmer's market seemed to be quite a success. I only heard one complaint, that it was too long to walk. They liked to bring a walk in a circle better. And everyone else, the comments I heard were positive. And I noticed that the Ivy House parking lot was full of cars, and people were coming from both directions into the farmer's market, so I think that's, looks like a success. The other issue is I would like to agree with Ken Shapiro. Lumston Park has the most problems and the least use of any of the city parks. Security is impossible. It is a fire hazard. My suggestion is remove the equipment and sell the land. Let's get rid of this money pit.
Thank you, Sue. Is there someone else that would like to speak to the council this evening under item 7.2?
Good evening, councilmembers. Tim Roef, I am a business owner here in Placerville and a resident of Camino. Come to you tonight, and actually, I'm glad the chief's here because you were going to be my stop tomorrow. I am one of the owners of a new business coming to Placerville called We Rock the Spectrum. This is a special needs children's gym. We are out there on Broadway. You might be seeing us doing our work, putting it together, getting it all rolling, all that. The reason I'm coming before the council tonight is to make you aware our grand opening is July 28. We start at 10 o'clock in the morning. We're going to have a ribbon cutting about 10:15, 10:20, after I thank a few people for their efforts and all that. And I wanted to formally invite all of you. I understand the mayor is going to be out of town that day, but perhaps Vice Mayor, if you wouldn't mind coming, that would be greatly appreciated, and if we can get it confirmed, I can announce to everybody that he'll be there.
All right. I'll do my very best.
As a matter of fact, that is why I also wanted to go over and see Chief Ortega to see if possibly the police department could be involved in some fashion in helping us out. So, I'll go over there and talk to the folks over that way tomorrow. But we also, on that particular day, the grand opening day, we have a wing of We Rock the Spectrum that is a complete nonprofit charitable organization. So, anything that anybody in the community in terms of, we have Buttercup Pantry, bringing us some pies, that kind of thing, would be greatly appreciated, and of course, is completely tax-deductible, and you'll receive a letter, all that. But like I said, it'd be great to see if we can get some of the police department out, the representative, July 28, 10:00 a.m. Be there, and it would be great.
Great. Thank you very much, Tim, and welcome to Placerville. Welcome to Broadway.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming this evening. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to item eight, the consent calendar. The consent calendar can be considered under one motion unless there is an item that a member of the council wishes to have removed for discussion.
I'll move for adoption.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on an item on this evening's consent calendar? Sue, we really needed to get you your own microphone.
Should've just stayed up there.
No, it hurts.
Okay, Sue Rodman again, and I have two comments on the agenda here on the consent calendar. Eight, 11, and I hope this is the last change order for the Blair's Lane Bridge. I know Murphy's been very active on this project, but 28 changes is a lot of changes for any project. And I don't think it's our engineering staff, but I really have some concerns about our contractor on this one. But it does look great now, so I'd like to know, are we through? Are we done? And the other one is 8.12, which is adopt a resolution ratifying the purchase of a new Heskvarna self-propelled gas concrete saw in the amount of $16,735.40, and approving budget appropriations from the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures and about an equal amount from the Water Enterprise and the Sewer Enterprise Fund. My comments are this, I believe this item was in the original budget workshop request and was subsequently lined out to provide the city with a balanced budget. Now, it is back on today's agenda to be funded out of unforeseen expenditures and both the Water Enterprise and Sewer Enterprise funds, pretty much a one-third split for all of those fund sources. This is not an unforeseen expense. It was brought up in the first budget workshop. It was lined out to give us a balanced budget. It begs the question, what does our budget mean if we continue to add projects that were lined out after the balanced budget was approved? While I believe this equipment is needed, it seems less than honest for the city to continue adding items that were deleted to balance the budget after the budget is approved. So, what is the real budget process for Placerville? How many other lined-out items will be brought back over this fiscal year? How does our supposedly approved budget have any reliability? What does it actually mean? Why does this type of piecemeal additions continue year after year?
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else have comments on the consent calendar? I'm going to get a, I think we can get answers this evening for both of Sue's concerns. If I could call on the city engineer regarding the Blair's Lane Bridge project.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Acuna. Yes, to answer her question, this is the final set of contract change orders as it's listed in staff's report. Contract change order number 28 is what's considered the final balancing contract change order, where essentially, we rectify all of the quantities that are installed. Some items are installed on a lump-sum basis, some items are installed per each or per linear foot or per square foot, per cubic yard, et cetera. This is the rectifying of the quantities for the project closeout. We do have some warranty work that they will be coming out and completing in the beginning of August. We were notified today that they would be coming out, I believe, August 6. So, yeah, we have very diligently held the contract to this contract and the requirements within it.
Thank you.
And it's closing.
Appreciate it. And I'll just say, we found that it was a challenging contractor to work with.
Yes.
Just be polite. So, it doesn't reflect on our staff necessarily. And I believe we have an answer regarding the concern for the purchase of the much-needed and long-overdue large concrete saw. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Acuna and council. Actually, the saw that is referred to here was not cut from the budget. It was simply deferred for us to bring back, as you recall, your capital outlay projects that we plan on bringing back to you. And so, we did plan on bringing all of those back. This is just one of those that was on that list. As far as why it was purchased early, this is part of a project that we are currently under construction on, on Country Club Drive. Our existing saw, we found, was deficient and unable to accomplish the task we needed done due to the depth of saw cutting that needed to be done up there. And therefore, I approved it since we were on that project. I requested and recommended the Public Works purchase the saw, which came out of last year's budget. This came out of the 2017-18 budget, not the 2018-19 budget, in order to expedite the purchase and get the project continued to move forward. It's been on delay currently. If any of you live in that area, you'll notice there's no work that's been going on up there, even though the signs say there's weren't going on up there, and that's due to the lack of this piece of equipment that could help us keep that moving forward. The intent was that if we hadn't done it then, if we wouldn't have needed it at that time, we would have included it in the budget, the upcoming budget, for the capital outlay projects, which will be coming back to council in August, September timeframe. As mentioned, there are some other items that are on that. The chief's waiting for a couple of police cars, I know still, that are on that list. There are some other vehicles that are on that, as well as some computer equipment and other items that we will be bringing back to you for your adoption of capital outlay items and how we fund those. So, this was always intended that we were going to purchase this. It would have been, however, through that capital outlay program that we're bringing back to you, but we decided that we needed to move that forward sooner than later, and so we purchased it, has been purchased already, and so that we can move forward sooner on that particular project.
And wasn't it costly to keep contracting out, to get a, to have, to find somebody that had the saw and--
Well, it would have been either that. It would have been more expensive to do that in the long run, or to, we were having a hard time finding one, actually, to rent that met our needs also. So, we felt that this was the best alternative for us at this time.
There are some curious neighbors up there that I keep getting snide remarks about when we're going to take care of that, so I'm glad to hear that this is getting started.
Maybe we can let them run a new saw.
Maybe so.
So, not to make light of the subject, it absolutely was a part of the budget workshop. It was needed. It was, the need was known before the budget process began. And is the saw in-house now, or is it on its way?
I didn't get that confirmed.
It's in transit. It's not in our--
It's in transit, so it's got little wheels.
We'll put it on--
So, it's going to get here by doing this, a little unorthodox method that allows us to get it on the street probably four months sooner than if we'd awaited for the normal budget process. So, and I have done my research on it, too, and this is going to be the guy's saw, they're going to use this all the time. We didn't buy some specialty thing. This is exactly what they need for their future around here, so, thank you. So, hopefully, that answers that. I had an item that I wanted to just highlight, and it's an important one, and it's one there was a little bit of confusion when the primary election season started earlier this year, that we were keeping it secret that there were elections in town this year. And I could ask city clerk Regina O'Connell if she would like to highlight it, item 8.5.
I'd be happy to. Let's see, I just want to make a quick announcement. Let me get my microphone here set up. So, there will be three full-term city council seats open for the 2018 general election on November 6. And to qualify as a candidate, one must reside in the city of Placerville and be a registered voter, as well as collect 20 signatures from individuals who also need to be a resident of Placerville, the city of Placerville, and a registered voter. And each signature that they collect will be confirmed by the registrar of voters based on the voter's information on file. So, make sure that your voter information is current and up to date. And so, I would encourage anyone that is interested in becoming a candidate to call my office, call the administration office, ask for the city clerk, and we can schedule an appointment to go over the qualification and filing requirements. And the first appointment will take place after the filing period opens on Monday, July 16, and that filing period will close on August 10, Friday, August 10. So, after that time, it'll be too late to submit any nomination signatures. So, and lastly, keep an eye on the city's website for future election updates.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Appreciate that. And again, the filing period for the three city council seats this year begins on Monday, July 16, and it ends on August 10. And as Regina has nicely offered, she is available for appointments, and there are some very clear guidelines that every candidate will have to follow. So, there's been some confusion in the past, and hopefully, she has it very well outlined this year, so I'm hopeful that your efforts are going to help make it smooth for anyone that's interested in running for city council. So, with all of that, I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please, on the consent calendar.
Move for adoption.
We already did that.
Cool. What do you want to--
Roll call vote.
I seconded.
Yeah, she seconded.
Oh, okay. Sorry, okay.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 12.1. Well, let me first say that this evening, we don't have any ordinances or public hearings. Item 12.1, adopt a resolution establishing November 6, 2018, as the date for an election on a proposed ballot measure seeking voter approval relating to the enactment of a cannabis business tax, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, and requesting that the county of El Dorado conduct such election. Mr. Morris, do you have the staff report?
Thank you, mayor and council. I'll start out with this, and if the city attorney has anything to add, he assisted me in putting this together, along with our council committee of Vice Mayor Acuna and Councilmember Clorici. So, what you have here tonight is a proposed ballot measure to go on the November 6 election, which would place a tax on all types of licensed types of business that could come into the city. I want to emphasize that this does not approve any type of business in the city. This just places a tax on it. If it is approved later by the council and that business comes in, then this tax would apply to it if it is approved in November. So, this is not legalizing any type of business, cannabis business, at this time.
Could you go into it just a little bit more, why this tax, about this tax issue? I mean, why it's required a vote of the people, maybe--
Well, because--
People could understand why we're--
Sure. Any tax measure that the city does requires a vote of the public in order to enforce. And so, this is a first step in our process, getting this tax measure out there for adoption, which will provide some revenue to, for education, if there is enforcement activities that are necessary, et cetera. This will provide revenue to assist with those activities associated with potential cannabis businesses that could come into the city and the-- come in the city in the future. As you know, we are currently working on, and also on tonight's agenda, is, your next item is some direction we are requesting from council regarding what types of cannabis businesses we want to consider and prepare an ordinance due to. That action, in terms of what types of businesses you would allow in the city, does not require that vote. It can approve, be approved by the city council. So there's, it's kind of a two-step process that we're going through. The reason we're going through with this tax measure first is because it needs to meet the guidelines or the deadlines to get on the November election, which means we need to get it to the elections office, office tomorrow, in order for this measure to qualify and be on the ballot.
So if we, if we approved having cannabis sales in Placerville, if this didn't get on the ballot, and we didn't, and, or it didn't pass, we, we could not charge a tax on it?
We could not. There would be another tax that the state charges. There's other taxes that they charge. But as far as what, we would not be able to charge a tax.
There'd be no city tax.
That's correct. Now, we do have, do plan on including in the business regulation ordinance, which will be coming back to you, which will allow these types of businesses. We do plan on including in there what is called a community benefit provision, which would allow us to have the actual businesses propose a certain amount that would go to the city towards, to provide a certain community benefit. So, it could take the place of that tax. However, we feel that it's still important to have this tax initiative, or measure on, on the ballot and have that in place. You will note that in here, this tax measure allows, again, every type of business. This does not say that we're going to allow every type of business. In fact, I think that discussion later on tonight, you will see that there are certain businesses that we will not allow in the city. But we felt it was important, and was recommended, that we include all of these types of businesses, tax measures for them at this time, because in the future, if something changes and you want to, or this council or another council wants to allow additional businesses that we don't initially allow, the tax measure will already be in place for that. So it, it covers that for any action that might take place in the future. So, just briefly, I'll, I'll, you can see what is here. This, this does two things. It sets up what the initial tax would be, and you can see that at the bottom of the staff report on page one and two. So it sets those for, for canopy space, for cultivation, and, and other items related to that, sets those taxes. And then it sets the, the rate for retail sales, for testing, and for distribution, and manufacturing and processing also, and for microbusiness. So it sets all of those, those taxes for each one of those type of businesses that could potentially be allowed in the city. Just, probably of most interest, I'll mention, is the, the retail sales, which is the one that is out there and being considered, is 4% of grocery receipts. You'll also note that following that, in the report, it also allows for a maximum level. In other words, the council could raise those over the years if it was determined that there was a need to raise it. But there's a maximum on that. So for example, for the retail sales, the maximum is 8%. So there's a range of 4% to 8%. However, that 4% cannot go up until after January of 2022. So the 4% initial rate would be in place until that time. You can also see on here is the, the ballot question that is being recommended. Unfortunately, there was some discussion, I believe, that that in the last meeting. It is a little bit difficult to understand. However, for what we're doing, it's necessary to have that information in the ballot question in order, order to make it legally qualify and really tell the, the citizens what they are being asked to vote on. So, I think that is most of, of the report. You have the actual resolution that, that would be sent to the council that defines everything that will go on. I'm going to defer to the city attorney. Are there some other items you'd like to add to that?
Just a couple of comments. One is that, because we refer to it as a tax, I think a lot of people assume a tax is a sales tax. This is not a sales tax. Medical marijuana is not subject to sales tax. Recreational adult-use marijuana is. This tax would apply to both medicinal and recreational. So if you had a situation where, in the city, you only approved, for example, medical marijuana sales, you would only receive, you would not receive any tax from that. But if you, if this ordinance were to pass, you would receive a business tax from the medical marijuana sales, because they're not exempt from that. I think I've confused you.
My eyes are going like, and I said-
If, if you have medical marijuana businesses in the city, you're not going to get any sales tax from them. But if this ordinance were to pass, you would get a business tax or excise tax from them, based on what this ordinance.
Oh, I suppose. You just don't call it a sales tax.
It's not a sales tax. It's an excise tax. And if I would ask the clerk to note that councilmember Clarici is now present at 6:35. Thank you. And that, that's the only distinction I wanted to, to bring out. And the city manager is correct. The, the ballot question is a little difficult to frame, because you're limited to 75 words. And you have to get in the amount of the tax in there. So, you don't have a lot of room to explain a lot of things.
In, in the investigations of you, you two experts now, is this pretty standard amount, the, the percentage?
These, these percentages are in line with what I've seen in a number of jurisdictions. There's a couple that have been higher than this. Davis, I believe, is 10%.
Yeah, I think I read that.
But this, it kind of is right in the mix with what we've seen.
Average?
Yes.
Yeah, very, very few, if any, that I've seen that are lower than this. This seems to be kind of the low end of the range, the 4%, and some, 4% to 6% in, in that area.
All right. Thank you, Cleve and Mr. Driscoll. Does that complete staff report?
Yes.
Councilmember Borelli has asked some questions. Councilmember Wilkins, did you have a question?
I have one question, because I haven't asked. Excuse me. So, at the end of it, it says to fund general municipal expenses to be adopted. That means general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Because they're like, is it to fight drug use? Is it to, so it's, it's going to go into the general?
General, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmember Clarici.
Hi there. Sorry I'm late.
I think you know about where we're at with this particular item. Did you have any questions for staff before I opened?
I have one question. Obviously, if you increase taxes, you have to get a vote. But what if you were to say, at some future, say, say this thing passes. Say, you know, we're out there selling this stuff and everything. Do you have to go back out to reduce the tax? Okay. So you can always dial them. And I'm not, I'm not capitulating on taxes right now, or the fees, or whatever we're calling this. But I have a sneaking feeling from what I'm reading, and the more I'm learning, is that these things are going to start getting dialed back in communities, because a lot of them are, there's already starting to be a competition across jurisdictional boundaries, and they're setting them too high, and then they'll start to dial them back. I was just curious if the process to go this way is the same as that, and you've just answered that. Thank you.
It's a new or increased tax, the way that the propositions were.
Wow.
Cool.
All right. But there's no other questions for staff at this point. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on item 12.1. If you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record when you approached the podium. And I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, staff and councilmembers. I appreciate your time and energy. My name is Kelly Chisano. I represent Pure Life Collective. So the only thing that I heard in that last bit, and I just would ask that you guys maybe do a little more research into it, is the state with about no sales taxes collected from medical, because we, the only exemption is for patients that hold a state ID card. So we have a, a handful of patients that are exempt from paying their sales tax. The grand majority of them do pay, and we do pay a large number of dollars every month in sales tax.
And you call it a sales tax and not a business tax?
It is a sales tax. We pay it to the CDTFA, just like every other business. The only exemption is for the state cardholders. And I'm not, you know, I just would ask that staff take a, one more read through that, and the Bureau of Cannabis Control will also answer that question. But I, I think this is a great rate, and I think that everything seems very fair and well-laid out. I appreciate the small, the group putting the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Well, let's, let's go ahead. Is there someone else? Good evening.
Councilmembers Rod Miller, Eldorado County Growers Alliance. We support putting this measure on the ballot, and we know as cannabis businesses that we have something to prove to be good community members, and our support is a demonstration of that. We know you, you will use the revenues from the taxes in an appropriate manner to support community problems, whether they're cannabis-related or not. We are quite optimistic that you won't have any cannabis-related problems when you have your cannabis businesses, and they'll be just compatible with this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Rod. Someone else wish to address the council? Anyone else? All right. But there's no further comments from the public. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Tricia, did you have a question?
We, collectively, collectively.
All right. What might that be?
Regarding the medical use versus the, I think we're on the same, we're on the same question. Yes. Okay. So, there's, you can't tax prescriptions, but you can tax fun. So, oh, I'm sorry. Whatever. You can tax recreational. So, you get your card, and then, so everybody that comes in does, has a card, and then everybody at this place, I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying.
I know.
Okay.
Let's ask, let's ask. Hey, let's ask a lawyer. What is the state ID card that Kelly was talking about?
I have seen reference to it, but I can't tell you exactly what it is, or how someone gets it. But I know that if you have medical, and I'm sure somebody out here has-
Do we want to?
Well, what I will do, because it's new information, I will go ahead and open the public hearing to get that one question answered.
I just want to mention, before you answer, that doesn't really affect what you do with this measure. And we can get back more information to you on that. But anyway, yeah.
It's all knowledge. So- Good evening. If you, your name, please?
My name's Matt Vaughn, the Medical Marijuana Caregivers Association of Eldorado County. Thank you for having us and going forward with this. The, in the Senate Bill 2420 in 2004, there was a medical program set up by the state to ID medical patients. That was run by each county. Eldorado County has a, through the Health Services, a division in which you can take your doctor's recommendation. It's not a prescription. It's just their First Amendment right to recommend something to you. You can take that recommendation to the Health Services of the county. You can find that on the county's website. They will issue a card that's similar to a driver's license, and that is, that's what I used to carry around when we had trouble with authorities and so on. It was like a stay-away card. It was the real card issued by the state. If you have that card now, you are exempt from sales tax only, not from the 15% excise fee, just the sales tax. We have maybe two people who come in and have the card out of-
Right.
Yeah, plus the hun, it's $100 fee per year to get that card, on top of whatever the doctor charges you to do.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you answering that for the entire council and audience. I'll close the public hearing again, bring it back to the council for discussion with our esteemed colleagues at the end of the DAS, who are now regional marijuana experts. They have been working very hard on this issue, and it's changes constantly. There are changes almost twice, three times a week. And the AdHoc Committee, we've met, what, three times now, again, developing all the information that the city attorney and the city manager have been, been obtaining for us, and working with our consultant. What is the pleasure of the council? If there's any other questions on this, with the scope of this?
I would just like to make a comment.
Comments would be most appropriate.
About to the document. We looked at a number of different documents. Some of them were more, even more sort of wordy than this one. We saw documents that were literally like a page or two pages. We tended, I, I like to be simple with these things. I, I think they're better, frequently better when they're less wordy. But in this case, a lot of what's in here is like the definitions of things. And I think that, that's really important to have that in your, in your documents, to say, when you define something, this is what it is, and this is what it means, and this is how it carries forward. So, even though it might appear to be, you know, I mean, and I guess, however, 13 or 15 pages isn't horrible. It's, it's, I think it's necessary in order for this, this, if we, when we, if and when we go down this path, to have something like this that is very complete and has a lot of definitions and, and a lot of explanations in it. So anyway, I, I kind of like the way it turned out overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici. Councilmember Wilkins, any comments?
I agree with him. I, I, I like this.
Thank you. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, my thoughts are, we're talking about the tax now.
That's correct.
And so we don't really, we don't need to read these 15 pages. It's just, we need to, right now, I mean, it's about establish whether we're going to, would have a, a sales tax or not, or business tax, or whatever this is being excised to. And I think that that's what we need to talk about. And I, for one, think that, you know, just in case, I think we should approve this and get it on the ballot, and then let the folks decide. And should this business, should we approve any of these types of businesses in the city, at least we're covered. And so, that's where I'm-
Is there, is there a motion?
I will, I will move the item.
I will gladly second it.
Been moved and seconded. Let me just briefly say again that, to kind of echo councilmember Clarici's comments, we are trying to be very inclusive. But again, I've said this before, I see this as, we're at the beginning of an industry here. And there is a certain amount of invention that has to be done, and setting standards and boundaries and what have you. And hopefully, we are heading down the right track so that future councils and future residents are happy with the, the roads that we are taking right now. So with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And as I understand it, this will go to the Elections Department tomorrow, in order to meet the deadline. So that was cutting it pretty close. All right. Staying in the same subject vein, item 12.2, review cannabis business regulation licenses and provide direction to the cannabis subcommittee. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. I, I could probably let one of our subcommittee members give this report, but I'll, I'll give a brief report and then turn it back over to you. Again, as you know, we've held two public workshops on this subject, and I believe the, the committee has now met three times, which is not a lot, but we, we did some good work and, and looked at this fairly carefully. As we finished the, the tax ordinance and began looking more at the business regulation side of this, the committee looked at the options. There's, there's many options of different types of business licenses, and cannabis licenses that, that can be taken out, different businesses that could be allowed in the city. And at, at this point, the committee felt that they needed further direction from the city council, before we take the time of going to the next step, which is to write an ordinance which will allow those type of businesses and prohibit those types of businesses that we don't want to allow. And so, the, the committee, at this point, has, has determined two things, out of many licenses that could be allowed. And that is that they definitely want to allow medical cannabis. They're recommending that. And they definitely do not want to allow, allow outdoor cultivation in the city. There's a broad range of other things in there, and there's actually more licenses that were, than are listed here to consider. But there's, these are the general categories of items that could be considered for you to go forward. Those include adult use, or recreational marijuana, retail dispensaries, microbusinesses, indoor cultivation, and I put in the report, it does not have to be, but it could only be considered in conjunction with a microbusiness if you decided to do that. The same with manufacturing could be considered only in conjunction with a microbusiness. And then distribution and testing. Those are the, the basic, basic licenses in there, and businesses that could be considered in the city. As I mentioned, there, there are others. One thing I was just thinking about as I was reading this, we put as distribution, there's also delivery that we probably should have listed there for your consider, it, it falls under distribution. But, but that's one that you'll hear mentioned quite often, is delivery of, of marijuana. So, with that, what the committee- So, with that, what the committee is asking for is council direction on, and this wouldn't be a final decision, but your direction at this point, what you would like them to move forward with in preparing a draft ordinance for consideration, so that we can begin that process, because that will take some time to look at various options of different ordinances that we've looked at, and what will work for the city of Placerville. I believe I'm gonna look at our city attorney, there will be the business regulation ordinance, there will also probably be a zoning ordinance, land use ordinance that will be required. So, there's a couple of ordinances in conjunction with this that we will be doing, and so, we wanted to keep this moving as quickly as possible in order to meet the timelines that we have. As you may recall, previously, I mentioned that our current ordinance, which prohibits any type of marijuana business, expires on October twentieth? I'm sorry, I should have that date, but it's approximately October twentieth. And therefore, it's our goal to have a new ordinance adopted that will be adopted, will be first and second reading, and take effect prior to that October twentieth date, which means we probably need to have that done by at least the second meeting in September to start that process, or first meeting in September, excuse me, to start that process, because you have the thirty-day waiting period once adoption takes place. So, that's what our goal is right now. If we don't make that, we'll, we'll figure that out, but that's, that's where we're looking right now.
What happens if you don't make it? Like, on October whateverth, does the town turn into a pumpkin?
Technically, if you don't have an ordinance that either allows something or prohibits something, then you defer to the state guidelines, and the state could at that point approve a business in the city. So, that, that's why it's important to take action by that day.
Can we do like, say we're not quite hitting our marks and saying our lines by the October twen- whateverth? Is it possible to do like an emergency extension of the existing?
We've already done all of that that we can. Your only option at this point would be to, to adopt a ordinance that permanently prohibits it going forward.
Wow.
And then, I'm assuming we could, we could repeal that once we get the ordinance ready to go. So, that's kind of the process that we could do.
Let's not get over our skis now and worry about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anything else, Clay, John? Okay. Tricia, did you have any questions?
I have a question. So, can you quickly maybe go over what state regs are? Like, if we don't, what would that mean for us? What do we default to? Well, there's certain regulations that are in the state regs, and maybe John can allude to those more, but for example, I'd be, the space from a school, from, I believe it's from another business, from, and from certain daycares and things like that, I believe, and parks, I believe parks is in there, six hundred feet. But other than that, a business could go anywhere in the city, as long as they're six hundred feet away from those type of places. That's what I was asking, so it's a free-for-all, per se? Correct. Okay, thank you. So, for example, I'll just mention, one of the things we've talked about is we don't believe we want the businesses, the cannabis business, in our historic downtown area. If we don't adopt this, which our new ordinance could define that, potentially, a business could come down in the downtown area, as long as it is that six hundred feet away from those defined.
If they met the appeal to the state, the permission from the state.
Correct, if the state authorizes, yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Do you have any other?
That's it.
That's a good question, because the state has, has its goals and restrictions. Patty, did you have questions for staff?
I think that that pretty much tells where I'm coming from, is that, and I've said it before, I would just, I, I like you, I like the recommendations from the committee, by the way, and I also, I, I think for, not only now, but for future councils and stuff, I want to protect our rights. I don't want the state being able to come in and just one more thing to tell us what we can do and what we can't do, and I would rather, I would rather set the controls, so that's where I'm coming from.
John, questions at this point?
How do we want to walk through this after we take comment, is the question? Because it seems like it's a bunch of, I don't want to say binary choices, because there are probably more than two in any one thing, but, you know, we had some specific things.
We're not gonna approve them now, right?
No, 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 but their direction.
Yeah, this is a, so let's restate what we were looking for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're at the point where we had reviewed the tax, or the business charge that we just reviewed, and just approved to go on the ballot, and of course, we're coming up to speed on all the regulations that are gonna also play into the business licensing and the zoning issues. And we do have some past experiences from the medicinal aspect, which are pretty outdated, frankly, at this point. So, we came to the conclusion that we needed to come back to the council and the community for further direction, to find out, as it's outlined here, you know, medical versus recreation, the various types of grows, the different types of businesses, transportation, testing, et cetera. Testing, for example, the labs, is brand-new. It's been in the state books since first of July, and there, you have to take into consideration, is that an acceptable operation somewhere in Placerville? So, we felt that we really needed to come back and get that direction so that we were not wasting staff's time in developing criteria that was not going to be the wish of the rest of the council and the community. So, here we are. And we did make those couple. One was.
No outdoors.
No outdoor cultivation, and we are recommending that, that there is medicinal cannabis sales. And so, the other things for consideration, I'll read them, I guess, adult use or recreational, microbusiness, indoor cultivation in conjunction with a microbusiness, manufacturing only in conjunction with a microbusiness, distribution and testing. And the microbusiness is a facility that grows and sells in one location. Their product has to be sold, think of it as they can, they have a grow area, and the products that they produce in that grow area are sold out of the storefront in the same location.
Not, not completely, they don't have to grow. They have to do three of four things.
Oh, excuse me.
So, they do not have to grow, but they have to do three of four function, and those four are the retail sales, could be cultivation, manufacturing, and testing?
Distribution.
Distribution, there, there we go, thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
So, what, three of those four, they have to be, do to be a microbusiness, but they wouldn't have to do cultivation, but they could.
So, so like a microbrew, where they make the beer in the back and sell it in the front?
Where they make the beer in the back.
Or the whiners. That's what I'm thinking.
And that is one combination.
We can use models that people are familiar with, that kind of helps them walk through.
The thing I want to stress on that, because I think that came up before, though, that doesn't necessarily say that, and I don't think they would be allowed to use on-site.
No, no.
So, that's, that's different from a microbrew.
I've heard that loud and clear.
Yeah.
That's the way it is.
That's probably where that comparison.
That's where it ends.
They have strict.
That's where it ends, right there.
Rules that they don't allow anything.
It's sort of like a microbrew, if you just got a growler.
So, if there's no other questions right now for staff, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and again, ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and remembering that we are looking for direction as to where the, the next phase of this, which is the business ordinance, should go here in Placerville. Someone like to address the council on this?
I don't know.
And if I could ask Mr. Yule to turn our new air conditioner up?
Do we actually have a new air conditioner? Yes, we do.
I think that everything except the indoor growing and outdoor growing, I would like to see us have no cultivation. With all the problems that Sacramento has run into with homes being converted into engrows, engrow, or indoor grow sites, I think that we want to avoid that. There's such a thing as a, as a licensed greenhouse type of thing that you might consider, but the problem with allowing indoor cultivation is it tends to become any indoor space that anybody wants to do, and it can really make a mess out of neighborhoods and homes.
Someone else like to address the council?
I'll address the council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kelly Chisano, Pure Life. Again, so I, I think this is, I think my suggestion to, to the council and to staff, I think moving forward with what you have slated there in your medicinal and recreational sales, testing facility is the only facility that is on its standalone licensing. You can't hold that license type and any other license type, because they want to keep the authenticity in the testing facilities. So, that I don't think would have a huge impact. We work with a lab currently, and, you know, it's a couple, it's computers pretty much that they're putting the stuff into. It's not like there's off-gassing or anything on that. The, as far as the other, you know, indoor grows, the concern that Sue has is very valid, because we all know what bad, what, how good neighborhoods can turn into not neighborhoods, but on the state is very strict with commercial licensing, only hap, or commercial licenses only being allowed in commercial spaces. So, it'd be an indoor warehouse-style facility, or like a licensed greenhouse, or it would not be permitted in any residence. And as, yeah, I think that we're onto, I mean, I'm open to any suggestions farther. I think you guys have put good work into this. I, I think that there's a lot of benefit for the community that can, I think a lot of you will see, or not see, rather, if it's something you're worried about seeing, is how the cannabis community can really bring a positive aspect to our small city here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Someone else wish to address the council?
Councilmembers Rod Miller, Eldorado County Growers Alliance, again, thank you very much for all your work on this, and thank you, your staff as well. We certainly believe that the cannabis businesses are gonna be a positive for this community, providing incentive for, for more visitors, get off Highway fifty, to provide more jobs for folks, tax revenue, as you've discussed, and really, hopefully, your strategy will be to compete against the county, and to compete against other communities. Therefore, I think it's very important to get a head start right now. That's one advantage that you, you have in this, is that you can move quickly and allow some cannabis retail businesses here, such that, that the public starts to understand where, where to go, and you'll have, you'll have a competitive advantage. So, I really hope that you make this policy something that's not just for the summer of two thousand and eighteen. Hopefully, you'll make this a policy that lasts a few years, and I, obviously, granted, this area is evolving quickly, but really, the, the risk of this whole experiment failing is because of local government's inability to allow permits. Prop sixty-four is not yet a success, and the problem is that local governments are not permitting these facilities. And, I mean, there's a wealth of evidence that, that real estate values improve, that there isn't crime, that's different than any other business, and therefore, I'd really recommend that you include adult use in your retail portion of the permitting. Medical use is only thirty percent of the market and likely to be less, so why, you know, support businesses that are at a disadvantage? Why hamstring them from the beginning? Allow adult use permits. Most of these businesses will permit for both medical and adult use, so they can compete with the rest of, of the, the region. Also, you might want to, I really think this is really very important, that you include adult use. Again, these, these businesses need to be competitive, and so, so let them compete. And the same thing, you might want to look at manufacturing, that there is low-risk, non-volatile manufacturing. There may be facilities here in the city that are appropriate for this low-risk manufacturing, and it is an area that the county is not addressing. So, again, you have a, a potential here for really providing some incentive for some businesses to come, and even potential, you know, build new, new facilities. So, thank you very much for all your work. I appreciate the thoughtfulness, and I'm out of time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rod. Someone else wish to address the council? All right, seeing no one else approaching?
Ladies.
Oh, there we go. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Donna Arist, I'm a Placerville resident. I'm just a little bit curious about why you said not on Main Street. I think if this is a product that is legal, that there's an age at which you can buy it, why would it be any different than the bars that are there already? This isn't going to turn Placerville into Amsterdam, this is a commodity, I'm not commodity, a product that people will buy. If it's not on Main Street, where is it? In an alleyway? I mean, it doesn't need to be that way. That's all.
Thank you. Someone else wish to address the council? Seeing nobody else approaching the podium, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and direction. So, are there any new questions after we've heard from our speakers?
There's only one thing that bothers me, and Mr. Miller said the same word. I, I don't like hearing that we want to establish this to pull people off of Highway fifty. I don't want, I don't want that kind of a reputation. What I'm looking for, looking at is that this, I truly believe it is a growing industry, it's gonna happen, it's here and all over California, and I, I think the connotation of pulling people off the highway for cannabis is not a good sight for us to have. So, I really would like to say that that's not what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking of it in terms of it is a growing business, it's an opportunity, obviously, it's going on all around us, and why shouldn't we have our share? But I feel like it's, I'm, I guess I'm more or less looking at it for our, our folks here, our community, and tourists that would normally be here if that's what they so partake of, but, and establishing something and pulling cars off Highway fifty, that's not what I have in mind, so it's just my comment.
All right, thank you. Tricia, did you have a comment?
I do have a comment. I, same with Patty, I don't want to be the Costco of pot, like, we're gonna stock up on the way to Tahoe and grab it, but at the same time, I don't understand, on Main Street, we can get there some other time, or we don't, but to the gentleman's point, I don't understand why can we go to Cascata and get like the taco and a beer? Why can we, we're gonna finish up and go get some drinks, no, let's go get some pot, if that's your thing. It's, you know, it's recrea, it's legal. It's, doesn't seem to me to hurt anybody, more than alcohol. Just me, but, so why is it like the God-forgotten thing that we cannot allow anybody to use in the city publicly?
Well, that's the state. Well, that's the state. But I think I know what you're talking about.
You know what I'm talking about.
I think, I think Councilmember Clarice, you comments?
Yeah, well.
Put your microphone on.
I will. I have, I am sure.
When I said publicly, I don't mean like out, going to the park, you know what I mean? Like, in an establishment, regulated.
That's why I was saying what you were talking about.
If I could ask you to hold your thought for just a minute?
Oh, I don't know, that's awful.
Maybe it might take me a little bit longer. I want to, since we are at that point where I'm asking for councilmember comments. When, council, or excuse me, Mayor Thomas, in her absence, and I've checked, we checked with the city attorney, she has issued a statement that outlines her concerns and comments on this item, and so I'm gonna go ahead and read those into the record. Memo to the city councils, Placerville City Council, July tenth. Please accept my regrets, I cannot attend tonight's meeting due to business out of town. In reviewing the agenda, I understand that the cannabis subcommittee is seeking council direction on a potential cannabis business regulation in item twelve point two. After conferring with the city manager, I would like to offer my comments in regards to this item. One, I agree with the subcommittee's recommendation that we approve medical cannabis within the Placerville city limits, with reasonable limits as detailed below. Two, I do not agree with the approved adult use or recreational marijuana retail dispensaries inside the city limits at this time. Three, I strongly agree with the committee's recommendation to prohibit outdoor cultivation of any kind. Four, I would consider indoor cultivation and manufacturing in conjunction with a microbusiness, and would also consider distribution and testing, if it makes sense. In terms of limits, one, I agree with In terms of limits, one, I agree with the limit of two cannabis dispensaries, making sure to avoid downtown historic district and to avoid any locations east of Chanel School Road. I agree with strict limits in avoiding a reasonable proximity to schools, daycares, and places of worship. Three, I ask that the council and committee consider a strict prohibition on any outdoor advertising inside the city limits, in parentheses, no billboards, except for building signage that complies with our city sign code. Four, I would like to ensure that any cannabis business contributes to the economic health of the city and pays for an increased public safety costs incurred as a result of this industry. Therefore, if a ballot measure fails to pass an additional sales tax, I would support a commensurate community benefit paid by this industry to our city. I thank the Subcommittee and the city staff for their efforts on this business regulation. Thank the city council for their prudent, careful, and thoughtful deliberation on this item and the community for offering their perspective and guidance through this process. With appreciation, Wendy Thomas. So, now, thank you for allowing me to read that in.
I'm glad you did that. I guess maybe we ought to just start to, I, I'm on the Subcommittee, but I can throw out guidance to myself, I guess? Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't always work, but I try. Okay. I think that we should, from, I think we should consider both, both the adult, what do they call it, adult recreational and the medical. I think we, we need to go take both of those forward. In terms of the geography, there are certain, the, the way that, that the Vice Mayor and I kind of discussed this in our committee, you know, you can, you can make, you can get a map and the folks here can do the GIS and they can make circles around a map. But before we got really into the sort of fine sieve portions of it, we wanted, and we could apply state law and then see, because state law's like the minimum, we could always do more than their radiuses. But we kind of talked it over and I've had some feelings about geography. To the lady's point, yeah, I mean, you don't want to sit there necessarily and say, well, you can't do it on Main Street in the historic district. But I've heard, you know, it's not just these meetings, it's not just the folks that come to the meetings. You, you get, you get a lot of advice in this job and, and most of it's at Rayleigh's. And, and the downtown is an area that where folks have kind of said, yeah, you know, they, they don't have any trouble with the idea of doing, having some sales in town, but they, the historic part, and I don't even know why, but there's just something about it. But it's not entirety of Main Street. It would probably be, we discussed the parking district, which goes roughly from, and stop me if I say something wrong, where the, between the Shell and, and Jack Russell, because that's kind of the limit of that end of it, I think, on Main Street down that direction. And then up to Cedar Ravine, the Ivy House is the last, I think the last of the public, paid public parking in town. So that's like the parking district. So Upper Main, which is that bit from Cedar Ravine up to Broadway, Broadway, and this was, and Wendy mentioned it, but this was really something that I came up with and, and I don't think it was all my own, but I really don't want to, we're going to run a little experiment here, potentially. We could be running an experiment here. So I was thinking, that part of Broadway above, basically kind of above Jim's Automotive? Or Ray? I always get a, Jim, Jim's Automotive. And there's the place now where they do the kids gymnastics stuff. From that point east has got enough of its own challenges. There are a lot of issues on that part of Broadway. And not that I think that anything bad's going to happen if we go ahead and, and the city does something with this particular issue, but, you know, you, it's just kind of a place you don't want to put one more thing into until some of the other things up there sort of get metted out. And then, of course, if you go west, anything on Lower Main, which would be kind of beyond Spring Street, and then all the way down Placerville Drive and, yeah. So we're not saying, like in a back alley, we're saying just, there's just like this chunk of town that's pretty special to folks. And, and that's an area that, that we've heard enough about it and it's like, you know, and there'll be plenty of places to go here in town if you really, really want to pursue this, if we in fact go ahead. So that was kind of the idea about the geography part. So I would like to posit that to the council as one of the things to give us guidance on, or to include the entire, you know, commercial districts of all parts of Main, not, not Main Street, all parts of Placerville. And then we can get out and start making circles around things and parks and other things like that. It may turn out that a lot of places will just kind of get kicked out anyway because of whatever, schools and nurseries and stuff like that. So that would be my first suggestion. I have two suggestions. One is we consider, and I suggested, we go ahead and do recreational adult use and the medical as kind of the two tracks. And then all that other lab and that, that stuff too. I, I'm curious about labs. Labs intrigue me because it sounds like jobs and people doing stuff and kind of cool things. But let's, if we could just take those two things first and get direction and then we can talk about micro businesses and everything. Is that, is that okay for folks?
Yeah, no, I think that's excellent.
Okay.
Patty?
Along the lines of the testing and stuff, I, I read quite an interesting article and I think it was in the Bee not too long ago, and they talked about how the cannabis industry is employing a lot of very, very knowledgeable people, chemists and scientists, et cetera, et cetera. And then I also talked, I think it was, well, it was one on my trip up in Seattle, but they, it seemed to be stressed that the labs are necessary bec, if you treat it like a prescription. Because it's my understanding that there's different, I mean, obviously, there's different potencies and what one person might require, another one might, and they need experts to talk to people instead of just walk. And I think like in days past, I, I don't think there was any restrictions on that. And I think a lot of powerful pot was sold and I think it created some problems, but, but I think if, looking at it from a medicinal point of view, that I, I think it's necessary to have the medical testing is where I'm coming from, so.
Let me get a clarification from the city manager. What we're trying to do here, just to skip direction for the ad hoc committee correctly? Do we need, do we need a motion or can we just do it by general consensus?
I can kind of count. I don't think we need a specific motion, just direction is what we're looking for. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And so I think that would we, would it be the wish of the council to direct staff to prepare, or prepare, excuse me, to have the ad hoc committee begin working on a business ordinance that would have adult use, medical testing, laboratories, testing lab?
So all of them, all the ones that are listed?
Yes, all of those that are listed. Yeah, basically, because we've got these others, the adult use, micro business, indoor distribution testing.
Right. And the idea, I, I, the idea I guess would be to have a very broad tent because you, you could create a bunch of rules and ordinances and guidances and stuff and then just never use them. You know, you could have them, you know, like almost like toggle switches. You could say, oh, well, I, I want that and I want that, but I don't want those four things yet or ever, who knows? So it'd be like that. So, so you could have sort of, you could be prepared for this sort of thing.
So we would be looking at developing the next levels, which would give us an all-inclusive ordinance so that we could cover any of the potentials as we know them at the moment. Patty, do you?
I agree.
Is it, do I, general consensus, ask staff to move forward with that information?
We're still excluding outdoor cultivation, right? Correct. So, so basically, everything that's listed under the consider in the staff report, we would include at this time.
Consider.
We'll start working on that.
And just, just a clarification, so manufacturing and indoor cultivation only in conjunction with micro business or not?
I don't quite understand the, the micro business thing, so I need more explanation on that.
We had that discussion.
You could have like, you could have like, you could have people growing, once again, going back to the imperfect brew pub model, you could have them growing and selling, like, you know, there'd be a wall and they'd walk out and they'd sell it in the same building, you know, the simple model. If you, if you don't sort of make a distinction between that, you could have someone buy a building and just grow it to grow it and sell it. But like a wholesaler.
A wholesaler.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that kind of?
Yeah.
Is that a good, okay.
Good example.
So that would be the kind of question you would want to know. Do you want to have just growing for growing sake and then that would?
Oh, and not have a business attached to it.
Not have a business attached to it.
I have a, I have.
Up to this point, it's been that we weren't going to do that, just by the makeup of the existing retail areas. All through town, really don't have a, a building that wouldn't take significant modifications.
I have a, yeah.
My only point on that is generally what I've, and I may be wrong, but looking at what other cities have done, generally, they confine those type of uses to an industrial area.
Right, which we do not possess.
The city does not, does not have industrial zoned areas. And, and so that was my only thought on that.
Tricia, did you have a question?
Yeah. Just to clarify, are we completely taking off the table recreational adult use indoors in a retail facility?
You mean like people smoking there?
Yeah.
Like a bar?
Kind of like a bar. Or like a cigar bar. Or you go and you buy some, you can't, you know, you can't go in your car and say, you can't go on Main Street.
In private.
Yeah, on public, on, on, private.
Most of the cities that I've looked at prohibit consumption within the premises.
Is that for recreation only or?
Either.
For either.
So either way, you have to take it and go?
Yeah. And they, they also go so far as to prohibit it within a certain radius of the licensed premises as well. So not only in there, but usually within 100 feet or 200 feet. And then you've got state regulations that say you can't, you know, smoke cannabis in public or places where smoking is prohibited.
But if you open, like you can't, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You can't smoke indoors, but if you have a cigar bar, say, you can smoke in there because it's, that's what it's for. So is it because it's all new? We, we don't do it because it's too new or?
Probably.
Maybe.
What are they doing? We have a.
What are they doing in Colorado?
I have no idea.
We're going to find out.
They're doing pretty well, actually. But, okay, I think that this comes down to that area.
We've given staff, I think, the direction.
I think we've given them direction, but I.
And Tricia's comments are well taken.
Yeah.
Looking to the future.
It's a bridge. It may be a bridge too far.
Happen, yeah?
You could have future.
We're looking ahead.
Future consideration.
Have that just as an information item. Where's the state at? Where are the other states at?
Yeah, we, we can get some more information on that.
Okay. So, we have, I believe we have given you sufficient direction.
Do you need any, are there, is anything we have?
Believe it or not, I think we're, we're ready to move on.
Okay.
And I thank, I thank everybody for their, their comments and their patience this evening as we work through both of these items and we'll move on to item 12.3. Adopt a resolution approving the content of the Public Health Mural Project located at the underpass at Highway 50 and Mosquito Road Transportation Arc, proposed by the County of Eldorado Health and Human Services. Mr. Rivas is, is not here with us this evening. I see a couple of familiar faces at the podium. Clay, would you like to start off or should we?
I, I think we can just turn it over to Andrew and Olivia and let them move forward. I appreciate them being here and Claire Pierre worked with them on this, but I don't think there's a lot to add to it at this point.
Well, I'll ask you to just introduce yourselves for our audience, please.
Good evening, council member. My name is Olivia Byron Cooper and I'm here with Andrew Vonderschmidt from the Arts Council and Orin Miller, the artist who designed the mural. I work for the Health and Human Services Agency.
You can go ahead and pull that down a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
Public Health Division. And I realize that the real purpose for us being here is to discuss the redesign of the mural that stemmed from community input from the last time that we presented to all of you with the hopes of garnering your support for the project. But before I turn it over to Andrew and Orin to discuss the mural design, I'd like to make sure that everyone is aware of why and how we got here in the first place. This project is a collaborative effort between the Health and Human Services Agency, the Eldorado Arts Council, and the Boys and Girls Club. You may be asking why public health has its hands in a public art mural project. I mean, it's simply because public art does good things for health. Public art brings people together. It provokes conversation, as I think we can all attest to. And when placed strategically, it can encourage people to be more mobile. There are four themes that are woven throughout this mural design. The themes were identified by our community through a community health assessment as priority areas for us to address through our work. The four focus areas are healthy eating, active living, behavioral health, and access to care. The concepts for these four focus areas came from members of the Boys and Girls Club. Orin took their ideas and incorporated them into what you see today. We've been asked quite a bit how this will be paid for. The funding for this project comes from a small pot of money set aside to fund public health projects that support objectives within our Community Health Improvement Plan. Health-related public art is one such objective. There have also been contributions from the Arts Council, the Eldorado Community Foundation, Images of Hope, and the Placerville Rotary. If we are successful in garnering your support, we will request through our application to Caltrans that the mural be placed on the Mosquito Road underpass, which was strategically chosen because it's a hub of activity with a major on and off ramp that serves as a gateway to Placerville, the proximity of the trail system and the transit center that's right around the corner. The mural will have an approximate lifespan of 20 years and we will have an extensive maintenance plan including graffiti removal that will be handled by the Arts Council. We hope that this project contributes to the already vibrant public art scene that is occurring in our community and helps to bring awareness about the benefits of incorporating art into built environment design. We also hope that this might encourage other non-traditional sectors to considering sponsoring art in our community. Some communities have embraced the benefits of public art so much that they set aside funding to incorporate art into new construction projects. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Andrew and Orin, who will speak about how we use the feedback we received to create the mural you see today. Thank you for listening and I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you, Olivia.
Before I begin, I would like to take a brief moment to address the Mountain Democrat article on July 9th that addressed this agenda item. In the article, the reporter stated that I used the word rape while I was addressing the city council the last time I was here. Those who were present know that I did not actually use that word and a cursory review of the video online will confirm this. As a father of a young daughter and a citizen who is deeply concerned about public safety, I was aghast. As a Arts Council representative, I knew that this gross misrepresentation needed to be addressed. I contacted the editor of the Mountain Democrat and the reporter who wrote the piece. They acknowledged the misquote. Although there was no official apology from the editor, the reporter did apologize and I was assured that a retraction will be printed in the, the Wednesday edition. With that unfortunate distraction behind us, I'd like to move on to the situation at hand, public art. Art is a human thing. It is something that we use to communicate ideas, feelings, and concerns. Placerville is no, no stranger to public art. We have art from Placerville Drive to Main Street to Broadway. It covers historic, it is whimsical, it is sometimes morbid. It is everywhere. It permeates our public and personal fabric. Public art, simply put, is for everyone. And because it is for everyone, we have learned, as we all have learned, that everyone deserves an opinion. So what did we do with that opinion? We took all of the comments from our city council meeting. We took comments from social media, of which there were plenty to choose from. We collected all of those comments, put them together, had meetings with passionate community members, and we, what did we do with all that information? Well, we learned that more ref- Well, we learned that more references to Placerville need to happen in public art, that perhaps it was maybe too busy or too bright, that we needed more reference to history and that it was possibly a little too urban. So what did we do with all this information? We compiled a list of comments from the council, from the social media, et cetera. We ranked that, that list according to how many times things had been mentioned and we triaged that list according to what we could do to add this to our mural while still focusing on the focus areas. And we implemented those ideas into the design. Our artist, Orin Miller, took the suggestions back to his studio. He came up with tangible ideas to address suggestions and concerns. He created a design options that clearly addressed those issues and he designed a cohesive mural which celebrates Placerville while still communicating those focus areas. Without further ado, I give you, ladies and gentlemen, Orin Miller. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's really a pleasure to be here and I've really been looking forward to this a very long time. You have seen some of my work before. I know it was mentioned that I painted Snowshoe Thompson, but you'll also recognize the Jack Russell sign alongside Highway 50, the big oval shape with the, the dog and the beautiful lettering. That's my work. There are plenty of places up and down Main Street and around town, like for example, the tattoo shop has some of my hand lettering in the window. And I'm also pleased to mention that Mr. Ortega's badge that he's wearing tonight came from Gist Silversmith's where I'm an engraver and I engraved his badge. So I do have my hand in a lot of projects, but this one is of particular honor for me because of the four main concepts that were brought forth at the beginning by Health and Human Services, healthy eating, active living, access to care, and behavioral health. Those four concepts, if those aren't enough to build a mural upon for the community, then I don't, I don't have an answer for that. You'll see an actual scale model of the piece that will fit under the bridge. You'll also see that it maintains the four concepts brought to us by the Health and Human Services as well. It re-relates the original concepts and ideas and artwork presented to you earlier in the year, for which I am very, very pleased to have received all the feedback, positive and negative. It made me become a better artist and it made me rely upon my community's service, my, my effort as a citizen in this great county, and make something nicer for all of us to enjoy. Let's begin. You'll notice in its entirety that it displays the four seasons. Originally, it did as well, but what we've done, what we have done is we have made these same scenes, we've changed them to make them even more pleasurable, more accessible to us, but we've made everything pre-1900. You see reflections of our history, you see images of our town, and we see a host of characters, all of which offer us, you and myself, a place or two with whom to relate. Starting in the left, as we see up on the screen there, we see a mother and son playing baseball in the orchard, the apple orchard that is, another note to our local agriculture, an essence of our town year-round. Just behind the boy in his overalls with the bat in hand is a pup, a dog coming into view bounding through the orchard. In the background, we have the orchards in the tree. On the ground of the summer grass, we see it golden in the sun with a nice spattering of California poppies. I'm actually a, a board member of Hangtown Little League, so this particular part is, competes for my favorite, so. Baseball in our community is such a positive thing and so I couldn't help but mentioning that. Why don't we move to the next slide? In the next slide, you'll see another portion of the, well, you'll, you'll see, you'll see the basket of apples by the farmer and in my, in my mind, this is, uh, this is a small scene reflecting the farmer's market. You'll see a farmer there providing two children with fresh food, keeping in concept with healthy eating. The apple, of course, is not just a symbol of our region and our identity to those out of towners, but in fact, it's a symbol of health, education, and opportunity. Behind the boy, you'll see the trees turning because this is where the portion of the mural becomes fall. The autumnal colors of the Chinese pistachio behind him alongside the Pearson's soda works begin to sing the hues of autumn in this mural and to demonstrate the second season from left to right. And of course, I love the little girl's beautiful golden dress. All right, thank you. Thank you. I'm having fun. I hope everyone else is having fun. I really love the image and the idea to have local iconography included in this mural because, you know, that is what we're all about. There's, there are a lot of things that we're about and, and our history is so much a part of it. Therefore, the soda works building is right there in plain view and as a, it describes our downtown and as you can see, perhaps in the chimney on the top, you see the, the autumn's first fire and the smoke of that fire. But what we're really looking at here is the family doctor. The family doctor who's come to visit the local Eldorado County family. He's got his leather bag and he's tipping his hat to the family that is composed of the father, the mother, and three children. If you don't see the third child, she's peeking from behind mother's dress down below and, and when you see her from here, maybe not in the slide, but she is adorable. I made sure of that. But what's really important though is that this is the center of the mural. This is the family. This is on purpose. This is where it all begins and this is where we all are centered. This is, this is the part that describes the health and the humanity of our town. Access to healthcare, but also the nucleus of the family, the importance of the group. The boy, he has a look on his face as if, that he remembers the last time the doctor came and he had to maybe get a little shot. So that explains the look in his eyes. The father, though, is a very important figure to me. I'm the father of two, two sons, both Little Leaguers, both straight A students. And the father in this scene, he stands tall, he stands proud, he's there for his family. He's there to meet the doctor and he's there to satisfy everyone's needs to soothe the nerves. As you will see in the next slide, he is also positioned in such a way to protect his family from the oncoming winter. Where we see most recognizably our Main Street and our bell tower clothed in snow, a fresh layer of white snow amidst a very icy Main Street and the most familiar structures behind it with some pre-1900 transportation just there in the background, tied up to a Chinese pistachio tree with just a few bits of its golden leaves left. Maybe you can't see it so well because the blue sky is such, but there is a flock of geese above that in the actual mural will be another moment of wonder and beauty. But what's really happening here though is this lovely couple. Here's another man and woman, but they're younger. This man is clearly helping this young woman up who just fell. I call this piece Winter Sunrise, but it was also called Winter Walk, Morning Walk. You can see that he's helping her up. He, like all the other men in this picture, are being good men. They're making fine examples of men. They're doing the right thing. They're helpful, they're generous, they're kind, and they're supportive. She sees him as she reaches for his hand. In the background, the golden light from the morning sun comes over the horizon of the trees and she in fact sees him in a new light. Behind her, we've moved on to the next slide. Behind her, um, in this next slide is some, a little bit of paper whites and of course, the, the Chinese pistachio is represented again. It's a younger tree, but this is a springtime tree. As you can see, we're moving into spring and the tree itself has new growth. When this tree is painted on the wall, it will be the most beautiful springtime Chinese pistachio that has ever been painted. And that is a guarantee. Throughout this piece, we see the blue sky reemerging, the deep blue sky. But this is a moment that I am particularly proud of. This couple, this couple is strolling through the vineyard. He, as in other examples of the men in this picture, is kind and helpful and pleasant. Together, they are a beautiful union and they rely on each other. And as spring comes, they look forward to another year together. So they took a walk, he with a stick he found and she in her favorite dress, the color of The vineyard in the background is starting to grow and the grass is turning golden as we move to the right at the end of this mural. And just underneath, you may see a kitty cat that's chasing after something under those leaves and grass and the reemergence of the wild poppies growing in the bottom right. I know there are other iss, or another, I know that there are other things left to describe, but I feel like I've given you all so much and I think that you feel the love I have for this work. And I assure you that everybody who sees this will feel a great deal of that love. And I want to thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our presentation. As you see, we still have a few more steps to go. Once we receive a resolution from the city, we will bring our application to Caltrans and if we move fast, we could start our installation by fall of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Before you can leave the podium, I would like to see if the council has any specific questions at this point in the presentation?
I don't have any right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkins, any questions at the point? All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, well, we have just seen the artist's explanation of his work that's being proposed for the Mosquito Road Underpass. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item now and invite any member of the public that would like to speak to the council. Please come forward, state your name for the record and I am going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name's Megan Buchanan. I live in Placerville. I'm here to voice my support for the community mural. I was pleased when I learned this mural would be on an underpass that sees so much traffic from locals and visitors. I think this colorful mural will be welcoming as people make their way to the Sierras. Murals can connect artists, nonprofits, and government agencies in a collaborative, creative process. Community art adds culture and beauty to small towns. I always think fondly of murals in Fort Bragg, Carson City, and Petaluma. Unfortunately, by opposing something as innocuous as a community art project, we're sending a message to young, creative members of our community that new ideas will be put through the political wringer. The nature of the arguments against this project remind me of the opposition once faced when the Eldorado County Veterans Monument was being built. Even as a young kid, I remember wondering how something so positive and well-intentioned could be so fiercely opposed by a few loud members of the community. We live in a world where there's so much need. I hope for some people who redirect, I hope for some people that they would redirect their energy towards the greater good rather than a community art project. Thank you to the Eldorado Arts Council, Kristen and her team, Orin Miller, and everyone involved for their hard work and dedication to this community project. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan. Could I, could I ask that we please don't have applause during city council meetings? We don't usually applaud between public comments. Does someone else like to address the council on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Miranda Caprioti and as a nutrition educator for the University of California Cooperative Extensions UC CalFresh program here in Placerville, I fully support initiatives that serve to promote the Community Health Improvement Plan. Public art has the power to inspire, inform, and transform communities, which is especially important when the message centers around health. I am particularly, particularly inspired by the inclusion of the Boys and Girls Club in the design of this mural. Youth voice is critically important in projects that impact the community and has the power to develop young people's leadership skills, self-efficacy, and sense of belonging. Community health is a collaborative effort and one that benefits from greater visibility. Thank you.
Good evening again, Sue.
Good evening. While I'm not the picture of health right now, this is a huge improvement for this mural. I think it is, now reflects history of Placerville. It's more reflective of Placerville and I think this is a great one now. So I would definitely vote to approve this one.
Thank you, Sue. Someone else wish to address the council on this item?
Good evening. My name is Peter Wolf. I'm an architect. I live about a quarter mile outside of the city, but I've spent a lot of time in the city. As an architect, I'm, I'm here to speak in enthusiastic support of the matter before you. I think it's a, it's going to be a great mural, but being an architect, I'm, I would get all those pesky pictures of people out of the way and look at the buildings. But I, I am in, fully in support of the project, but I, I'm not in support of the process and I think as we move forward, I think, because there's probably nine other places like this in, in the city, nine or 10, where there could be really nice legitimate locations, you know, back, you know, canvases for murals that will require us to go through this Caltrans loop and get the city's involvement. And in this particular project, while I applaud their effort, I, I really don't like the process in that it gets done with whoever has a conference room and somebody gets the idea and then, then you're already pretty far down the road in terms of the public review process and I think the presentation you got tonight was, was well spoken, but that could have happened a long time ago. There's also another way to do these kinds of things where you do them basically as a blind jury competition and it doesn't have to cost a lot of money and take a lot of administrative oversight, but I think you would get much deeper and more involvement and it would also lead to other artists. And it would also lead to other artists being involved. You know, I'd like to see it, you know, there's a lot of young people that are really good artists that are probably certainly deserving of having the canvas that these overpasses. And then I would also urge everybody to think about the ceilings, because those overpasses all have another canvas on the ceiling. And some, different times over the years, some of us have talked about that. But so I would think, a lot of cities, it sounds, I know the city manager's just going to go, oh, no, this is going to cost money, the minute somebody starts talking about, let's have a city public art ordinance. So you're not just regulating what's happening, but you're also encouraging it. But I enthusiastically support it and hope we move forward. This is a great way to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Someone else wish to address the council?
Good evening, Kirk Smith. I too enthusiastically support public art, think it's to be encouraged. The concerns I have is about what looks like government by grants, where you get money because there's strings attached to it, and you have to conform to those strings. And it proposes the kind of problems that were just described, how ideas start from the top down instead of from the bottom up. And you'd get a lot more support in the community if you did it the other way around. For example, there's really no comparison between the Snowshoe Thompson mural and this one. Why? Snowshoe Thompson's mural is about seven by seven feet. This one is 10 times longer and about three times higher. The one at Snowshoe Thompson, you're going to be seeing at a straight angle when you come in from the west. You're going to see it straight ahead as you're at the slowest point of Main Street that goes back to when that very section was with horse traffic. You can't go any faster, so you're going to see the Snowshoe Thompson straight ahead. Here, under the underpass, you're going at a high rate of speed. It's on the side. Now, that's problematic. I would love to have the same thing, even the first design, right around the corner, where it's also on the underpass, but faces people who are engaged in a healthy lifestyle, who are doing all four of those kinds of things described in the illustration. So, but no, we've got strings attached. So it's the same group that, because they were following a grant, came before us last year and had a wonderful idea about parklets, and that was something that wasn't going to be well-sheltered, so that meant you were exposed to sun during the hottest period of the summer, and then what do you know, they come back later and they got another grant, they're talking about skin cancer. So now what are we going to do? Later on, we're going to have another program where we start to educate the public about distracted drivers, which is going to happen when you're at high speed. It's inappropriate location. I also appreciate Andrew's comments about mistakes, because we certainly see those a lot. Like today, there was actually a council member who said, "This was not intended to cover our history," close quotes. But that's not consistent with what I read from the Arts Council and from the Health Department for the last week or so, and certainly as it was explained tonight. So you have this mix mash of the way it's done, because that's how grants get handled. I really think it'd be a great idea if it was right around the corner. As far as being an improvement, that's true. They also said the same thing about when we had hanging replaced by electric chairs. It's an improvement. But I don't know if it's the best way to go about proceeding these things. This has been in the works for a long time, and when it first came up in March, how was it sprung in the public? Three days' notice. And if you looked in the back for the supplemental material provided, where was the illustration? I never would have noticed it. It's in the resolution. So the public didn't have it but for 24 hours before. And that's what you got when the public starts coming back with comments about potholes. No, they know that the money is not coming from art, or local sales tax. The money is coming in another fashion. And so what it means is that the, just to conclude-
Kirk, could you wrap up your comment, please?
Just to conclude, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Someone else wish to address the council?
Good evening, Council, Kathy Lishman. I agree with what Peter said about the process, and the fact that it came to the city last of all, when it actually is in the city, was not a good idea. And the fact that Community Pride could be involved early on in art projects. Community Pride has three public art projects. The first one was in 2003, was the Snowshoe Thompson mural, because Community Pride commissioned Orin to do that beautiful mural, and it's, it is beautiful, and we love it a lot. After the last meeting, I'd like to thank Olivia Byron Cooper for coming to a Community Pride meeting and discussing it with us, and the pistachio trees throughout the mural were a suggestion from Community Pride. I feel for Orin on this project, because even though he was given some artistic license, the parameters were pretty specific, and the road has been quite bumpy. And I am glad that there was public input, that concerns were voiced, because I think that it's more cohesive and a, and a big improvement. Public art is important. The one thing that I would have to say, and I know at the, the meeting, the council suggested some historic elements of Placerville, but to put the people in, back in the past, doesn't really show health today. And so I'm sorry that it doesn't show, it shows old-fashioned, it has to have old-fashioned things, and it has to have a horse, and it can't have a bike, and it can't have a bike trail. And I would just like to say that I think making it old-fashioned kind of ruins the intent of public health. I think the mural is much improved, and I know the artwork. Orin has gone through a lot of work to prepare all of these things, including that banner that I wish the audience could have seen. Because I didn't realize, when I looked at the little pieces, that it was going to be all one, and that one person, the arm of one person was in the scene of the next one. Anyway, I think his, when he, when he paints it up there, it will be something that's quite fabulous. And when he said in, in that, the write-up about that, "The characters in the artwork reflect everyday Placerville residents, the regular folks of our community," they don't really reflect the regular folks of our community today. And then Olivia had stated in that, "With the public health mural project, we hope to increase awareness of our current health issues and approaches to addressing them in El Dorado County." Having the people in the past, I don't think really does that. But I think the mural is beautiful, and I think it will be loved when it's up.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there, someone else wish to address the council on this item? Good evening.
Good evening again. I'm Donna Eris from Placerville. You know, when Picasso painted Guernica, just imagine, you know how big it is. It's this whole, whole thing. Everybody had an idea. Everybody had an opinion. Everybody saw something different. And then when you go and you see that painting today, everybody that's standing there is going to have a different opinion about that painting. And I'm sure that Orin's beautiful mural will have that same effect on people. People will think about maybe their grandparents that lived in Placerville, maybe my husband and I coming here is, come-hers, as they say in Virginia, we're come-hers from Washington, DC area, and, you know, I don't think it matters, I don't, if, if it had been a contemporary painting or had been, you know, a historic painting, everybody's going to see something different in it. And I think in the end of the day, everybody's going to smile when they finally walk away. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on this item? All right, seeing no one else approaching the microphone, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. So are there any, first of all, are there any new questions from anything we've heard? Anything, all right, I don't think you have, comments?
Comments?
I have a comment. I have a couple. I 100% agree with Kathy Lishman's comments. I met with Andrew, and I, I know we all did, and we all have our own opinions on this, and one of the things I said, apples instead of corn. That's awesome. Also, the bell tower in winter, I think that's awesome. Where is it? Right there? It'd be cool if it had like Christmas lights, because we have our big parade of, you know, that would be awesome. But I think overall, it's really good, but the clothing. I think that this little girl is totally out of place, right here, with the, with the apple in her hand. And the clothing, I think we should go back, we're living, we're going to pay homage to our past, yes. We have apples and the bell tower and Four Seasons and the Soto Works building, and that is fantastic, but the clothing is kind of like, huh, to me. Like, if I saw this, I'd be like, huh, it's kind of like brings you down. That's all.
All right. Well, thank you. Let me ask Councilmember Riley if she has any comments, questions?
Well, I just want to say that I, I really appreciate Owen coming forth and, and explaining all this. So therein lies my same problem that I had with it last time. It's, and it's the location. I don't think there's enough people that are walking, that are standing there, are going to be able to look at this and appreciate it for what it really is. I, I, after he explained it all, it's beautiful, but I just don't think that it's going to come through what it's really all about on that underpass, where people are traveling at least 15 to 20 miles an hour. And I, I just think, I almost think it's an effort wasted in that particular location. When I had my conversation with Andrew, and this was one of my biggest complaints, is that the other mural was way too busy. I also think this is way too busy for that particular location. I wish that somehow, and I, I know that, and I agree with Kathy, that his hands were tied in what he had to convey with this piece of art, but I, my suggestion, not that it means it was the right thing or anything, but if we could have had something, a larger image that somehow they could have made it work for all four of those particular items that they're trying to address. And again, like I say, I, I just, I think all this is wasted on that location.
Thank you, Patty. Councilmember Clarice.
I think it's fine. I wasn't real pleased with the first one for a variety of reasons, and I, I mean, I barely can draw stick figures, and the last person's going to start doing, being an art critic, but I think this is a, I think it's an improvement, obviously, when we went through a process. I agree the process is flawed. I don't think we were chasing money. I think that this was an idea, and there happened to be some money. And this is a popular trope that gets thrown around this town, that we sit around here and go, oh, there's a grant for Acme Widgets. We, do we need Acme Widgets? No, we don't need Acme Widgets. But we had a grant for Acme Widgets, why don't we go buy some? Nothing works that way, okay? It doesn't work. I'll disabuse you of this knowledge. It doesn't work that way. I don't know how these folks came up with this, and we weren't really part of this process, because we were like the last people they talked to. The process was flawed, but I think it ultimately got to a good spot. I agree, the first time when I saw it, I kind of went, oh, oldie, ye olde, like we don't have enough of that in town. But on the other hand, if you go ye newe, then you get people yelling at you that it doesn't reflect our rich historic past. And at some point, you have to kind of make a decision and put a stick in the ground and say, this is what we're going to do. I'm not sure where we would put this if we didn't put it on that location. There's only so many concrete walls on Highway 50 that would actually fit this. And I think that it has come through a good, no, a flawed process. I think it's in an interesting place. I was the president of Hangtown Little League for five years, so we share a common misery and a common joy, because it's the best job you'll ever have. I was particularly taken with the doctor, and I like to throw this one out there, because it kind of gets to what this town is about. Our family doctor, when I married my wife and we had our children, was Bob Riley. A lot of you might have known Robert Riley, he was a wonderful man. He delivered my wife and both of our children. And so that is kind of getting to ye olde towny stuff, pretty deep. And he did that for a whole bunch of families. And my guess is he probably got to a third generation, because he was a doctor forever. I think it's fine. I think that the location will be okay, and if people drive past it too fast, then they'll just miss out on something, and maybe some of them will stop and they'll go and look at it. I don't know where else to put it. I don't want to put it around the corner, and I don't like that idea. I think it's going to be fine where it is. I think it's a good improvement.
Well, I don't think that's, and that's not what I'm talking about. I just, I, number one, we didn't commission this.
No, no, that's another thing, too, is we hadn't, yeah.
And so it's all presented to us, and so what we're asking to do is approve of a location for this particular thing. Like I say, I just think it's, this is a beautiful piece of art, and I just think it's just too bad. I, I think it's going to be totally wasted. It will, honest to God, it will improve that underpass. It is the ugliest thing probably in this town, and it'll, you know, it'll spice up the walls and stuff, but I don't think people are going to appreciate it as much as it should be. And yet, like you're saying, well, it's their loss. It is their loss, and it's a heck of a lot of money and work has gone in this, to this, that I think it should be appreciated.
Yes. I will offer a different view of reality. Maybe it'll create its own gravity. Maybe this mural will be something that people will actually stop, get out of their cars, walk over and take a look at. The idea that, I mean, and I, and I share your concerns. I mean, you're driving through there, I'm not worried about the safety issues of it. I mean, I, people drive by, there's a McDonald's there with a playground for crying-
Oh, no, it's not safety, it's just-
Yeah, but, but, you know, maybe it'll create its own gravity. Maybe people will stop and want to look at it. That's what art is about, and I'm, I'm fine with it. I think I'm fine. I'll move the picture. Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of you. Go ahead.
Hold on. Interesting comparisons. Appreciate everybody's comments, certainly appreciate Warren's interpretations for us this evening and, and explaining his work. There's no doubt that what he has created absolutely fulfills the job that he was given. It displays the various healthy living criteria that was a part of the, I think Patty hit on it, the commission of the work. I have to agree with Peter and Kathy's comments, however, that this is an extremely flawed process. The community should have been involved in this way back. It has basically been brought to us at 99% completion and asked for permission to put this piece of art on that particular piece of Caltrans property. That is not, that leaves us with very little, you know, there's been, very little as a way to try and get community input. There's certainly two very polarized sides. Last meeting, it seemed like it maybe was attended by, a little bit more by, what do you call them? The ye oldies?
Ye olde.
Ye olde history folks. This evening, it seems that we have more folks from the Art Council community, and I appreciate both groups' passions. Still, it goes back to a broken process. To me, this piece of art in that location, that location, it will never live up to what the story of this, this artist intended it to tell. It was suggested at the last meeting that the original design, which, by the way, I think it was some of the history-leaning folks that, that maybe suggested the old pre-1900 dress. I'm getting, I see an artist snowhead shaking back there. So wherever that came from, I, I don't see that as a big improvement to, to telling Placerville's story and modern health issues, whether they, whether they be a man or a woman's modern health issues. So, again, so that's more of the struggle of creating this in this environment. I have been really working very hard to take my opinion out of this. I am looking at this, being tasked with to try and decide, does this piece of artwork fit in this location? And it is a very difficult decision, when so many options have already been, so many boxes, as Peter said, design options have already been selected by other folks and other groups and other conference rooms. Again, we get it at this very, very, very late stage, and, again, polarizes the community. The issue that I have with it is that so many of the examples that were used this evening, and by both sides, all of those are, have historic references to them. Snowshoe Thompson, everything that I see in the handout from the Art Council for existing murals has, has a connection that a resident of very short time is going to go, oh, well, that's this old part of Placerville, this is part of that, this is a famous person. They're going, they get that. So to show those as examples of, absolutely, we support those, and I love and cherish every one of those. But they're, they're doing a different job. They're, they were commissioned, as Patty said, for, for different intentions. Community Pride, Snowshoe Thompson, outstanding. The building right across the street, Tortilla Flat, and the, the historic, you know, the hos- The building right across the street, Tortilla Flat, and the historic, you know, the hacienda kind of look. Those are all great, but they all fit our town. It's all really easy to make the connections. I'm not convinced that this is gonna be really lost in this location. So I have a real concern, and I want to work with whoever in the future to make sure that future public art projects get an opportunity to be fully vetted and encompass the community from the very beginning. I think that was what really made this very difficult. So those are my concerns with this.
So I have a question, please, here.
Yes.
Okay. So is it this or nothing? Or the other one or nothing? Like you said, we're so late in the process. This is what we have, and that's what we had. So is it, I, for one, I think the location is good. I like it. I think it's great. That's, we're, like you said, where else, like that huge, what is it, how many feet, by how many feet? Where else, we don't have many of those. And like Patty said, it's ugly. I mean, it's, it's, you know.
It's what?
It's ugly.
It's a concrete wall.
I think, I disagree with Patty, where I think contrast, well, you don't think so. I think it's a good location. But the art itself, and I think the artist is great. I think the concept is fantastic. I think that they, besides the attire, because it just is not, it doesn't reflect. When I look at art, when I look, if I wanted to see something like this, healthy living, I want to see, okay, I've got a ten-year-old and a seven-year-old, and we're gonna throw, they're gonna throw baseballs to each other, and we're gonna, my grandparents are gonna go for a walk, hand in hand, in modern, like, you know, like a sweater vest, and my grandma's gonna, my mom is gonna have modern-day attire, and I'm gonna be dressed normally. And if I'm pitching to my son, I'm not wearing like lace-up boots and an ankle-length dress. And so to me, it's unrelatable as like a young family, and I think as, we have to go forward with Placerville. Like I said, it's gonna be, it's a twenty-year lifetime, so I'm gonna be, I won't say, but older. You know what I mean? So that's, that's, that's my point.
So what are you, what are you, what are you asking?
I, my, my question is, is it, we get this or nothing? Because I want something. Or the other one or something, or nothing? Is it, so is it option A, we get the other one? Option B, we get this? Or option C, we get nothing?
The other one's out of the picture.
This is the proposed mural, and.
I think Tricia may be asking that, could they, could they improve on this?
I know. I hate to say that because he's done so much for it. So that's why I ask. I mean, I'd rather have something than.
And that was my point, that I feel like so much effort is gonna be lost on that wall. That's just.
Yes, and it's just another example of how this is.
Challenging.
Challenging, and as I said earlier, I try to remove my opinions, the art critic part of it, looking at what we're being asked to do, and that's approve a Caltrans spot. Mr. Clarici.
Who knows? Maybe twenty years from now, we'll all be dressing like Mumford and Sons, and this is what we're gonna look like. I mean, I'm not trying to make light of, this is a very important thing. You're in a public art in a public place. It's an important thing. It's a serious subject. But on the other hand, I, I just, I cannot, for the life of me, get worked up about the clothes they're wearing. I think that these are delightful images. They show our town. They show the history. They show people in the medical profession. They've got people eating apples, and these old people walking around, and I don't, I.
That could be you.
That is me. I can't grow a beard like that, but yeah. I think we should do this. I really want to do this.
Is that a motion? Go ahead.
Do this.
Is there a second?
To answer my question, is it this or nothing?
It would be the artwork as presented this evening. So Councilmember Clarici has made a motion to approve the artwork as presented this evening in the location as requested. Is there a second? Okay, so a motion does for the lack of a second. Is there a council member that would like to come up with another motion to?
I don't know if it's in the form of a motion, and I also, again, wish we could do more consulting. That, again, we can't, the Brown Act, we all can't meet with somebody because unless we have a public meeting or a workshop or something. But I just think that there needs to be more input on this from us and from the public so that they can get a clear vision of what we think, what the public thinks is gonna work. Because they're looking at it, and I, believe me, I respect all you folks, the, especially the artists that, I mean, I can't even draw a straight line, and, but I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the artist telling us what this is all about. And I did not get that when I, before you came before us. And again, I keep saying this over and over, it's not gonna show up on that, in that location. So I would like, I wish that we could maybe work more together. I would like to see something there. I really would, but I just think that we need more input. Maybe somebody's got a different idea that could work with, with the folks. I don't know, but that's where I'm coming from.
But what would go there? This is, we have a healthy living, this is what it's for.
And I get that. I get that.
And who's gonna find it?
Well, they'll, I think, are you on, on a timeline? I'm sorry. Ask, would you ask them if they're on a timeline for this grant?
Well, you heard from Andrew that as soon as he was to get it approved, he was getting a Caltrans.
Will their grant cease to exist?
All right, that's the information that I will ask Andrew to provide. Is there a time limit on your grant funding? Or Olivia, whoever can answer that for us. I'll open the public hearing momentarily to obtain this info.
No, there is no timeline for the funding. There is time limitations in terms of being able to paint it because of weather. So if we were to proceed this year, we would need to move rather quickly.
Great. Thank you very much. Olivia, appreciate that. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. So wait, that makes a little bit of sense, and.
How much is?
No, 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 asking me, of course.
Okay, my recollection was, this is not like, we're not, this is not like the biggest grant that God ever gave Placerville. I mean, it's not very much money. I don't know how many more times we're gonna, I mean, Warren's a wonderful person, but I do not know how many more times we can ask him to go and change the clothes on these people. I, I don't, I'm trying not to make fun of this. I'm trying not to make light of it, but where do we think we're gonna be?
That's why I'm, that's, exactly.
Where do we think we're gonna be with, with more public input?
I don't know, except, with the exception that I, I would wish that there had been more input so he wouldn't have had to go to all that work. That there could have been maybe just a concept, and, you know, is this what you want? You know, and then Tricia, what she came up with, and you came up with the clothes. You came up with, it's too old-fashioned, so.
Actually, at the last meeting, I had suggested the interior wall so that the folks that are walking the healthy lifestyle along the trail could enjoy it. Because there was a lot, at the last meeting, we heard a lot of concerns about. It was gonna distract drivers. It was gonna get vandalized immediately. It wasn't gonna tell a message that the average traveling person was gonna appreciate because of the time that they were gonna have to view it.
But the people walking are already healthy. The McDonald's people coming back, they're the ones that need to see it.
That was what John said when I suggested that last meeting. He said, they don't need that. So my comeback was, that's their reward for, they get a beautiful wall because they are living a healthy lifestyle.
Well, this is, this is. Well, as was mentioned, as was mentioned at the podium, the reason that the Snowshoes Thompson thing is the end all and be all of murals in town here is because people stop there and they look at it. So if you put it over on the bike trail, I mean, we have a lovely bike trail, and it's used by a lot of people, but I guarantee you, the number of people that use the bike trail is the number of the number of people that drive by there every day is, I'm gonna guess, one percent. I'm gonna take a number out of the air, but my guess is one percent of the people walk as opposed to drive by there every day.
Okay, at this point, it's not fair to the artist or the Art Council to drag this on, I think, any longer. Is there anyone that would make a motion to acknowledge that this is an excellent piece of work doing what it was just asked to do, but not at this location? Or is there some other motion?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I would like to move staff recommendation, again.
All right.
I would.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right. So it's been moved by Councilmember Wilkins and seconded by Councilmember Clarici to go ahead and approve staff recommendation. And I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
No.
Councilmember Borelli?
No.
Councilmember Clarici? Councilmember Wilkins?
Yes.
So we are at impasse. Would somebody like, oh, I heard a microphone click on over here? No?
That's wishful.
They're cannabis experts. So would someone like to make another motion?
I don't know that it would do any good. That's what I'm trying to, I'm asking for, could, would it be possible to have a discussion of more, of, of public, more public, and not present it like it was done? I don't do Facebook, but I understand it was burning up. And there's so many people have so many opinions, and I'm sorry that all those dissenters, that they're not in the audience tonight, because they ridiculed us, they ridiculed the whole thing, and I don't think that's fair either, because that's not what this is about. I really want to approve something, part of this project, and, but I, I'm not sure that waiting, again, and I, I think it was a last minute. It was better than last time, but it was still a last minute. And I don't think the proper input has been given. And I really do think that we could come up with something fantastic, so if more people.
Procedurally, I would like to ask the applicants to come forward and see if they would be interested in, obviously, you've seen that we're at an impasse, right, two to two, so the motion fails. So the item sits unapproved at this moment. They've heard our concerns at this point. Andrew or Olivia, would you like to come forward and address?
Can I ask a question before that? Can we just hold this over till the next meeting when we have a full council?
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's certainly possible. Mr. Driscoll?
I suggest we hold it.
All right. Well, I would ask somebody to make a motion.
I will move that we hold it over.
I will second it.
All right, and then I'll ask, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So this item will be heard in our first meeting in August, August fourteenth.
Because the mayor should not be allowed to not be here and share.
Thank you all very much for your interest and attendance this evening. I'm gonna take a five-minute break. We'll come back at eight-thirty. If we could have everybody take their seat again, please. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll work our way through the rest of our agenda. I'll go ahead and introduce the item slowly. Twelve point four. Approve a consulting services agreement with Drake Hagland and Associates for environmental and engineering design work for Placerville Drive Bike and Ped Project in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And some additional work of Placerville Creek Bridge Replacement Project and for eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And two, authorize the city staff to issue a notice to proceed to Drake Hagland in relations to the same projects. Good evening, City Engineer Neves.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Acuna and council members.
If you could, please, update us on this, please.
Absolutely. The proposed consulting services agreement before you this evening is to initiate the project approval and environmental documentation phase, also known as the P A and E D phase, for the Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project and Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project. Exhibits of the project have been posted in the room. They are located right over there on that wall, and they're the two set of stacked exhibits. In two thousand and sixteen, the city applied for and received Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Funds, C M A C funds, for the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project. The purpose of this project is to improve the multimodal connectivity on Placerville Drive between Armory and the U S fifty undercrossing. Construction of the new sidewalk on, construction of a new sidewalk on Green Valley Road is also planned as part of the project. The city's Placerville Drive Bridge Replacement Project is also located within the same project limits and was initially accepted in the Federal Highway Bridge Program in nineteen ninety-seven. In two thousand and twelve, H B P recommended and approved replacement of the existing bridge as the best approach to addressing the existing bridge deficiencies. On January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, the city staff released a request for proposals in accordance with the federal guidelines funding for both projects and received two proposals, one from Omni Means and the other from Drake Hagland and Associates. The proposals were reviewed, scored, and ranked by an independent review panel consisting of staff from the City of Placerville, El Dorado County Transportation Commission, and the City of Sacramento. The proposal received from Drake Hagland was unanimously selected by the panel as the highest-ranking proposal. The cost proposal received from Drake Hagland is in alignment with available project funding for P A and E D for both projects. Since this is a qualifications-based selection process, the cost proposal received from Omni Means was kept sealed and returned in accordance with the requirements set forth by Caltrans Local Assistance Procedures Manual, Chapter Ten, Consultant Selection, with Caltrans as the acting federal oversight for both federal funding sources secured for the project. Staff's recommendations and the anticipated project timeline are summarized in the report before you this evening. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. It's an excellent report. Does there any council member questions at this point? Patty? All right, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing on this matter and invite anyone interested in speaking. Sue, why don't we just get you the microphone? Chief, can you help? Thank you, chief. There we go.
Fantastic. That's much better.
Yes.
Okay. This is the bridge we need to get done. This is the one that needs to be replaced. It's an eyesore. It's a safety hazard. And my only question is, is this the total price to actually get the whole job done? Or does this only get the engineering and the environmental documents?
We will get that answered for you.
But this one absolutely needs to be done. This is, after Blair's Lane, this is the worst bridge in Placerville, and it needs to get done.
Thank you, Sue. We'll get an answer for your question. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the council on this item? No? Okay, thank you. Closing the public hearing. Back to our city engineer for an answer on the funding status.
Thank you. This agreement will be what kicks off the project approval environmental documentation phase. I believe the estimate for the bridge replacement project is somewhere around four and a half million, and there is construction funding secured for that. It is a hundred percent funded through construction for that. We do have a local match on the, on the environmental documentation and the designing. The Placerville Drive Bike and Ped Project, this covers majority of the design. There will be some additional design funds that we will need to seek. I want to emphasize the size of the corridor that we're talking about improving. It's from Armory all the way down towards, heading towards Lower Main. It's quite a big segment. The construction estimate for that is approximately ten million.
Excellent. And is the bridge money, that's H B R?
H B P.
H B P, thank you.
So that's like Clay Street.
Yeah, and that would be like Blair's Lane.
Yes, sir.
And there's nobody here.
All right, very good. All right, well, is there any other questions for staff? Would someone like to make them?
I'll move.
I have a question. This bridge project has been going on for a number of years.
The dawn of time.
And I'm not sure I understood what I read correctly. We, we were given the go-ahead, and then, what, did that funding, did we lose it, the original funding? Or is this still a continuation of?
We did not lose any funding. It was a continuation through a series of extensions.
Okay.
And we got to a point where the funding that had been programmed, we were finding that the project was not making the progress that needed to be made. And so then we looked, took a hard look at the, at the bridge environmental document.
And so, then we looked, took a hard look at the, at the bridge environmental documentation phase, and we said, you know what, maybe we just need to see about having somebody else come in here. The previous contract had expired, and that's when we wrote the RFP, and then we only received two proposals.
But did you add, is there more than added to the project? The sidewalks or the, because that, is that all going to coincide that, I mean, it's all, I, okay, this is what, this is what I remember, is that originally, it was proposed for a two-lane bridge, just a replacement.
Correct.
And then, we found out that if we approved that, that we could never ask for another funding if, in years, as years pass, to enlarge it.
Correct.
So, that's, I, I think that's when it went on hold, until we could work that out?
It did, yeah. And in 2012, we submitted some information to Caltrans, and FHWA and Caltrans agreed that to just replace it with the bridge as it is now, is, it's, actually, originally, it was included as a widening, and then they took that option away. They said it's cost prohibitive, because the irony of this is that it takes less money to replace a bridge outright than to widen it in a lot of cases. And this is one of those cases. The bridge itself, when we moved forward with, okay, well, now we're going to do a replacement, then the city took a look at the planning documents that were in place, and one of them is the Placerville Drive Quarter, it's, the exact name is escaping me, but essentially describes Placerville Drive to be a four-lane road.
That's, okay, that's what I, where I was kind of...
Right. And that was one of the mechanisms that allowed for the approved configuration of the bridge to move forward.
Well, it just makes sense, and I replied it. Okay.
All right. So, does someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Go ahead, John.
Second.
She made the motion. I second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Spending big dollars, big project.
Everybody's gone.
Yeah, but Eric's still here.
We're going to mural, and the place is packed. We spent millions of dollars, and everybody takes...
It's always this way.
No, Amanda.
12.5. Approve a construction contract with CE Cox General Engineering for the Chanel School Road Pressure Reduction Station. One of my favorites.
I love pressure reduction.
City Engineer Neves?
Yes, sir. The proposed item before you this evening is to award a construction contract with CE Cox General Engineering for the Chanel School Road Pressure Reducing Station. Exhibits have been posted in the back of the room adjacent to the Placerville Drive exhibits. This project was originally funded and adopted as part of the 2013-2014 Capital Improvement Program budget, funded through the city's local Measure H sales tax, with an original budget amount at that time of $75,000. This project has been long supported and encouraged also by the Measure H Committee. Design progressed. Release of the bid documents was approved by council, and bids were received on June 14th, 2018, with CE Cox being the apparent low bidder, and the summary is provided in staff's report. The engineer's estimate at the time of bid was $136,000, but unfortunately, with the bidding climate we're currently experiencing, the low bid that was received was $172,700. As a cost savings to the project, city staff opted to keep construction management within house, and also, in addition to the amount of money that it covers to, as a cost reduction to maintain the in-house construction management, a 10% contingency for unforeseen items has also been included as part of staff's recommendations. To address the budget shortfall that will allow the project to still move forward to construction, appropriations for the Measure L Fund Operating Reserve officially making this also a Measure H and L project, thanks to the voters of Placerville, and we are now ready in a position to award the construction contract and move forward. Construction is currently scheduled to start July 23rd, pending the approval of this item, to minimize the impacts to the Chanel School, school schedule. And this concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Rebecca?
I think I asked this in the past, but I'm going to ask it again, just in case. How long will this, how long has the one, current one lasted, and is it, is this bigger and better now that it's going to not be?
So, the current one that we have now is, it's not old compared to other ones that we have in the city. The biggest issue is that it's inaccessible and unmaintainable. It's located within the travel lane within Chanel School Road. There actually has to be traffic control set up for public works staff to enter into the pressure station to either work on it or adjust pressures as needed. So, one of the, the picture exhibit that's at the top there actually shows where we're moving it out of the travel lane from Chanel School Road.
And I apologize, I didn't get back to see the picture.
That's okay. And you may recall, in April, the second meeting in April, council approved the easement with the school district, and the purpose of that easement was to secure the location for where the station's going to be moved to.
That's right. Now, it's all coming.
Yeah.
Now, it's all...
It's all there now. All right. If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Ask Sue Rodman to please address the council. Thank you.
She just like pops up.
Magic.
I love it.
Good evening, again. Oh, excuse, I had to turn, we were getting a little feedback.
Okay, are we on now?
There we go.
Okay.
There you go.
Hooray. This has been a long time coming. It was proposed by the original Measure H Committee, and it's too bad we didn't do it then. It would have been a lot less expensive. But, thank goodness, we are going to do it now. It's one of those things that was an original list from the Measure H Committee, so...
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments from the public? Closing the public hearing, and bring it back to the council for action. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move this.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Clutchy. Second by Councilmember Wilkins. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Digging our way deeper into the agenda, 12.6. Adopt a resolution approving a loan from the Sacramento Area Council of Government in an amount of $1 million. I noticed Mr. Warren's absent. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. As some of you know, the Western Placerville Interchange Project is probably the largest project the city has done for, largest road project. We did do a sewer project, which was much larger than this, actually, but some of the concerns that have come in, not have come in, but what we've been working on with this is that we could have payments as high as maybe a million to a million and a half on a monthly basis. That raises some concerns with the cash flow and keeping funding going the way we need it to. Caltrans reimbursement for that can be anywhere from 30 to 60 days, depending on how things go with them. So, we had a concern in meeting that. We're continuing with the project, and so far, we're doing well. But working with Woodrow Deloria and Transportation Commission, Woody, you saw us here earlier, and he left, but we appreciate all his help. He was instrumental in helping us achieve this. We looked at several options. We worked with the county and other options in terms of how we might make sure that we did not run into any problems with this. Tonight, what is presented to you is a million-dollar loan that would be given to us until June 30th of 2018. There were a couple of changes. That was a recent change. You have an updated document, or, excuse me, 19. We already missed 18.
I was going to say, we missed the...
2019. We're already late. And you have another document that's before you tonight, which has some updated things in it. It also, SACOG has requested that we also sign a promissory note to go with the letter agreement. That's been reviewed by our city attorney and myself, and we're both in agreement that that's, that's okay. We can do that. So, you have the new document. The previous document gave us until August 10th, I think it was, to return the money. There's some guidelines in terms of general fund monies, and you can only commit for the current fiscal year, and so, we brought that back to June 30th. We think that that will be fine, that the project will be pretty much winding down, we hope, by then, anyway, and so, we'll be out of the woods in terms of cash flow. SACOG has already, also told us, though, that if that is an issue, we can redo that after July 1st of 2019 if we need to, and keep, and reissue the money again, so it doesn't become a problem for us. They want to help us, and they don't have a concern with that. This does require us to pay interest on this. Their estimate in terms of interest is that it would only be about $6,000. That's what they've told us. I'm not completely convinced. I think it might be a little bit more than that, based on, it will be based on the Sacramento, or the California counties' interest program, similar to LEAF that we have for cities. And that's what they invest in. So, we would pay that interest rate after that year. Their estimate of what that would be is about $6,000. My estimate was a little bit higher, as you saw in my report, but we'll see what it is. Our intention is that we will take this money, and we will put it in LEAF, so we will invest it, so we'll be receiving interest on it.
Yeah, that's what you said, we're going to have it.
And if we don't need to use, use it, then we'll have that money to pay it off when it's done. If not, we may need to pay a little bit of interest. We'll see how that goes.
Why do we have to get it now, if we don't need it right now? I mean, why can't we?
Well, because it takes 30, longer than 30 days to, to get the money if we need it. And those payments come due in 30 days. When we receive an invoice, we have 30 days to pay it.
But it sounds like we're not anticipating needing this for a year?
No, 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 no. That's, no...
Then I misunderstood what you were saying.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're probably in the heaviest construction right now, actually. Is that right, Rebecca?
That's correct. The last progress pay estimate that was approved by the city, I believe about a week and a half ago, was for $950,000.
And for the next two or three months, that's about what they could be, that or more.
Yes, sir.
So, now is the key time that we need it. Once we get into next spring, we'll probably start winding down and have lower invoices at that point.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, now is when we really need this, and so, that's why we're getting it now, and it'll be there. So, so that's what's before you tonight, just that request to accept the loan and authorize myself and the city attorney to, actually, to sign the promissory note and the letter agreement, so...
Any other questions for Cleve? I'll open our public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on item 12.6? Okay. Actually, no one rising to the occasion. Close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for action.
Second.
Been moved in second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. I thank you, guys, for your diligence in being prepared and having ways to cover the costs.
Well, yeah, thank you, Woody.
Yeah, and thank you to Woodrow for his help. Again, good old El Dorado County transportation.
And it's the cooperation, I think, that we're sharing with our county and our transportation and transit, and it works.
Moving on to 12.7. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city to apply for an energy efficiency loan from the California Energy Commission, and authorize the city manager to sign all the necessary applications. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. As you recall, a little over a year ago, in March of 2017, we entered into an agreement with Johnson Controls for various energy efficiency projects. One of those we're currently working on securing financing for is the solar project at the wastewater treatment plant, and we're making good progress on that. Just quickly, I'll mention, we had a meeting with our representative at the water board today, and we're now looking at a 75% grant for that project, that we think we have a good chance. We're moving up, so that's good news.
That's great news.
So, we're, we're making good progress on that, that project. This project that we're looking at tonight is for the lighting and HVAC units in all of our buildings. You recall that that was another piece of what was approved a little over a year ago. And we've been working on, we've been focusing on the solar project primarily, but we, at this point, we've got that one to a point, and we wanted to come, start looking at this one. We've looked at various options. At one point, we looked at this particular loan, which is a California Energy Commission loan. However, at that point, we were told there was not funding for this, was about a year ago, that they had, they had loaned the money that they had available through this program. We've now learned that they do have, they've got more money right now, and they'll be receiving another allotment, I believe, within the next month. And so, they do have money right now. This loan program is a 1% interest rate, so very favorable. You can't get that, even the water board's interest rate will be more than 1%. So, we're very, pretty confident that we'll, we can be successful with this program, but the money could run out, so we want to move quickly with it. That's why this is before you tonight, requesting for our, your authorization through this resolution to make application for the loan. Johnson Controls will prepare the loan application for us, and they've already started that process, but they do need this resolution, and we hope to move quickly with that, to get in line for that funding. We will come back with you, to you, to accept that loan, assuming that that is approved. There'll be another process and to move forward with the project. So, this is simply a formality that we need to actually apply for the loan as part of the application process, is to have this resolution.
Very good. Questions for Cleve?
And we can apply for this thing, but if something crazy happens, we can say no. Correct. Okay.
Obligating anything?
Why I asked?
Tricia? All right. Patty? You're, okay. Any member of the, I'll open the public hearing, ask any member of the public to comment on this item?
Yeah, I would like to comment on this one. Sue's Rodman. Couple of things. One is, on the general fund part, where it says, replace the HVAC equipment in the Old Town Hall. I have a question about why we continue to spend limited funds without a function or a plan for this building. And then, when you get down to, it says, the preliminary numbers show a maximum amount of $784,112. But then, on the cost, it says, interest on the loan is at $56,969, based on a principal of $487,357. So, the max estimated loan is about twice this 500, this $487, which makes me wonder if that, the estimate on the interest would be about double that and be more like $100,000. And the other thing I don't see is any term of the loan. What's the loan term? If it's 1% a year and the interest adds up to this amount, the length of the loan is relevant, and it's not provided in the staff report.
Well, thank you, Sue. We'll see if we can get your questions answered.
So, the, the loan period, I believe, on this one is 20 to 25 years. You know, that would be selected as we negotiate with, with the Energy Commission, California Energy Commission. The reason you see two different numbers here is they have a limit on how much they were, they will loan, and it's based on the savings. Our financial advisor took what the information he had, and he prepared this, this document that shows the 400 and X number of dollars, excuse me, that is what, is what, in his calculation, what could be, what we would be eligible for. Working with Johnson Controls and the CEC, the California Energy Commission, we believe that we may be eligible for more than that. That's why it, the, the full project amount is over $700,000. So, that's something we've got to work on, and how we get that within those guidelines of what the CEC will loan us to fit with our, the savings that we realize. So, yes, there are some discrepancies in those numbers at this time. Those are some things we will need to work on through the application process to make this work. And if it doesn't work, we won't move forward with it. So, but yes, that's the reason for that, is the financial advisor came up with, based on his knowledge of the CEC loan, that we would only be eligible for the $487,000, where we've identified 700 and X number of dollars that is the actual amount that this project would cost. So, we've got to, we've got to fix that discrepancy in there, and we will do that throughout the process.
Okay, that's a good question, and good clarification. I will, if there's no other comments from the public, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.[1781.65]
I would move 12.7.
Second.
Been moved in second and a roll call.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Moving on to item 13, a few minutes before nine. Council reports from other agencies, Alameda Transit, I see we didn't meet, Transportation Commission, I think you guys were dark, Laughco, we met. Oh my goodness, we Laughcoed into the late night. We did a lot of serious talk going on about fire district consolidations and working with the county and the districts and so it'd be interesting that things could get better, could have a lot more audience at Laughco in the next few months. So, SECOG? Sue's back.
John?
John, is there a SECOG report?
No, mercifully, there was no SECOG meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici. And a two-by-two?
No, there have been no two-by-two.
And the, we'll have, let's see, do we, we can set an ad hoc, cannabis ad hoc committee meeting just at our own, based on our own calendars. All right, good. All right, like requests for future agenda items. Does anyone have anything for, well, I know, I actually have a couple that I would like the council to consider. And since we just went through the budget process and kind of began the new year, and it involves our planning department, and one of them was something I discovered last year with the help of Commander Wren, and that is that we do not have an enforceable noise ordinance in town. And so I would like to see planning take that up as a goal for their 1819 work. And the other thing, too, and it hopefully could be done with some plagiarism fairly easily, and that would be an Airbnb ordinance, that the county is just finishing up. They've done a tremendous amount of work on that and it's all really fresh and it should be, I would hope, easily adaptable to, to us so that we have something and we can.
I think staff has really, I've talked to Pierre about that and they've kind of moved the ball on that. Now, they might have been just privy from.
So I would, if the council would can.
Yeah.
Well, we did talk, we had one meeting where we talked about it at length.
Yeah.
And then I, I, we haven't heard anything more, so, but I really think it's something we need to get a handle on.
Is that, is that just human noise or does that include barking dogs and birds that they put out in the morning?
Actually, as far as I understand it, everything.
Birds.
We don't, I know we don't have a construction.
But they're creatures, they put them out and.
And roosters?
No, well, luckily, the rooster's gone. But no, just curious, is it just like partiers or is it like?
Barking dog, everything.
The chief would like to comment on.
No.
No, she doesn't want to comment. That's okay.
I wasn't here for whatever Commander Wren signed off on.
Well, he didn't, though. He did not sign off on.
But if we don't have a proper noise ordinance, it does make it easier than just using the generic penal code section.
Yes. I was very amazed at his depth of knowledge in city ordinances.
He's an amazing guy.
He is, very deep.
But don't they have to catch them in the act? You can't just say, he was making noise and by the time they.
Well, it's a whole process, but it, it goes into really being able to adequately deal with parties, construction noise.
Do you know how many times that city council people have gone out and literally and sat in cars and listened for barking dogs and?
Anyway.
It, well, kind of.
Today it would be, but then it was just council duties as assigned. All right, moving on to item 14, 15, city manager and staff reports. Oh, wait, going back to item 14, requests for future agenda items.
Well, I don't know about a future agenda, but it's kind of germane to the conversation we had about the mural thing here. There was, there is this, I don't know how real it is, there's this perceived gap in our public art sort of thought process and processes. And maybe, I'd like to maybe get community pride, like coming up with some recommendations.
Is Mr. Gill still here?
Yeah. Everybody looked over there like he was head, but come off, it swiveled if I talked to him. Go ahead, Steve.
There is a public art policy.
Can we, can we see it?
Adopted by the city council.
Okay.
Quite a ways back. Yes, we can make that available.
Yeah, could you like drop that in our?
Thank you very much, Mr. Clarici.
Well, you know, you want to be, I mean.
No, you're absolutely right.
Want to be responsive to this thing out here. I, I personally don't think it was that big of a deal, but, yeah, but you're right.
It, it could have been handled a lot smoother.
Yes, yes.
Right, it was.
Yes.
The efforts that.
Also, Cleve, I've talked to this.
Didn't have to happen.
How are we doing on the evacuation plan?
I have a tentative date set up for a exercise. I have to do a little more checking, but it's going to be next month sometime and I'm going to give all of you an invitation and let you know.
Awesome. Can we all join in?
Okay, so.
You can all join in, but it'll be designed so that you see what city officials have to do in the event of an emergency. And with all due respect, that means the five council members sit there and watch. But I want you to know what we're doing while we're doing it.
I'll be taking notes.
Okay, so what I am asking for is a follow-up on some of the meetings that I've attended, especially the one that CalCOG sponsored. And we had the evacuation, there was a whole portion of the program dedicated to that. And there was a lady there who is a professor, I believe, at San Jose State and like an expert in all this, and she was talking about some of the newer concepts, for instance, creating a grid, you know, for the city. And they're kind of changing their way of thinking of how neighborhoods, et cetera, should be evacuated. I do know that Placerville has a lot of, actually, they're two-way streets, but they're only one-way. And so she was talking about how the neighborhoods, they're given information and the, the people in the neighborhoods are, are told, you know, evacuate to the left. In other words, so all these people are not pouring out on the, these one-way streets and everybody's trying to go every which way. So that's the kind of plan I was talking about and also I shared after that big fiasco down in Oroville and went to a Lega Cities meeting and we had their council talk to us at length and left us with, don't, don't surmise that anything is, you, you need a plan. Go home and do it. And that's when I started and it's been, what, a couple of years now? But I just, I, I am not aware of any grid or anything else that's, that we have for the city of Placerville. And we have a lot of these streets that worry me because they're now even more so overgrown. Fire worries me more than anything. And I just think that, that there should be some sort of a, a plan.
There is a plan. I'm not at liberty to discuss it now because we don't want to stay here for two more hours.
Thank you.
But we can go over that when we have the exercise next month.
Thank you, Chief.
That's, that's all I've been asking for.
I, I think the other point to make to that is the difficult part that we have here is, in talking about just a grid and, and you go left when you come out, is there's so many variables to that. That depends on which way is the fire coming from. You tell them left might send them right. So, so there's too many variables. I, I think that our, our police department and our fire department have their plans in place that how they would reach people, but as far as telling them definitely where you go, you don't know that until that particular circumstance comes up.
Okay, so therein lies what I've been asking for is do we have something in place?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, so that's all I want to know.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'd like to move on now to city manager and staff reports.
Just quickly, I wanted to, our city engineer reminded me to mention that our Canal Street project will be starting on July 18. So you'll see some work going on up there. There is one piece of that that we've been working on with the school district. Our funding did not allow us to do anything with the median down the middle of the road. I have a letter from the school district now, from the new superintendent, who just started, I think, last week, Ron Caruth. And I'm actually going to meet him for lunch on Friday, but he has provided me a letter of their commitment to pay for a new fence down the middle of the road. So we will remove the, we will remove the K-REL and the existing chain link fence and it will be, provide you with a nicer tube steel fence, right, Rebecca? Tube steel fence, which will look much nicer than what you currently have out there. And they have agreed to, to pay for that. So it, it's going to be interesting how we actually do that because they've agreed to pay for it, but they can't give us the money until they meet in a board meeting in August after our project is complete. So anyway, we will, we will get there, but it may be a little bit interesting in how we get there. Let's put it that way.
We'll demand an IOU.
It's all good. Anything else, Mr. Morris? I think that's it. All I'm looking at my staff.
I think Patty stole your letter.
That's okay.
I thought we were all giving one.
If there's nothing else.
I, I think, that's fine. You can keep it if you want it.
Oh, Mr. Clarici stole my.
I just put it out, so it's fine.
The stolen property's been returned. All right, upcoming items, next regularly scheduled council meeting, 24th has been canceled, so we will meet again on the 14th. So with that, I will adjourn us until the next regular council meeting on August 14, 5:30 closed sessions, 6:00 p.m. regular meeting. Thank you and good night.